Welcome to the March 2nd Troy City Council Meeting. We're asking anyone that has a cellphone or electronic device if they please turn it off at this time, and if you have to make or receive a call at some point during the meeting, if you go out in the hall for that, we'd appreciate it. Thank you. Is Pastor Cliff Lambert present? Pastor Lambert was to give our invocation this evening, but he is not here as of yet, so our rules show that I call on our Mayor Pro Tem for that, so we will have Mayor Pro Tem Martin Howerlack do our invocation, and then that will be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise.
Is there a mic on? I don't know. There we go. You know, one of the things I like to do when it's my turn is to share it with my colleagues, and Christina Brumfield has volunteered this evening.
Thank you.
Lord, thank you for the time that you've given us to come here and meet, Lord. Thank you for the opportunity to serve you and to serve this great city. Father, as we approach your throne this evening, God, we would ask that you would bless us with wisdom, cause us to look to you for answers to some of the difficult decisions that we have to make. And Father, just work in each one of our lives so that we might want to honor you in all that we do. God, I thank you for everybody that sits at this table. I thank you for their willingness, Lord, to want to serve you in this capacity. Bless their lives, God. And as we go forward in looking at our agenda, Lord, I pray that your name will be honored in all that we do. And we ask this in your precious Son's name, Jesus. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for Thank you, Councilwoman Brumfield. And may we have the roll call, Mrs. Bartholomew?
Mayor Shilling?
Here.
Councilmember, what do you need? Here. Brumfield?
Here.
Eisenbacher?
Here.
Fleming?
Here.
Howerlack?
Here.
Coram President. This evening, we begin our meeting with some presentations, and we have with us this evening our state representative, Marty Nolenberg, who is going to give us a short legislative update, and we appreciate him taking time from his schedule to come, so. Welcome. Thank you.
Thank you for having me. I will be brief. Thank you, Mayor, Council, for giving me this opportunity. Our state is going through some very challenging times. Our economy, as you know, is at its worst date in microspeak, and we've got, again, record bankruptcies, job losses, mortgage foreclosures, and the state is certainly feeling the impact of all of this. We recently had our revenue estimating conference, and we're looking at a $1.6 billion deficit in the forthcoming year. And this is after we increased taxes a year ago in the tune of over $1.3 billion. So, the challenges that we're faced with is in large part due to the fact that revenues are dropping and expenses keep rising. And it's a serious concern of mine, it should be a serious concern of all of us. And it's not going to be an easy fix. In my view, we need to take some personal responsibility and make some tough decisions. In the last several years, we've taken advantage of gimmicks, one-time fixers, and we're sort of running out of time. And I am concerned that we're going to use some of these fixers. The stimulus packages can be used to fix some of these holes that we have, and in my view, that's the wrong thing to do. We've got to make some tough choices, and, you know, I'm optimistic that we'll do that. So, I think it starts with us as legislators. When I first ran two years ago, two and a half years ago, I ran on, I told the voters that I think we should eliminate lifetime healthcare benefits for legislators. I introduced it the last go-around. I reintroduced it this time around. Recently, supported legislation that would reduce legislator pay. I also introduced a bill that would cut legislator benefits if they miss work. It just seems to me that if we want to build and gain the trust of the taxpayers, we should be accountable ourselves. I think the taxpayers are asking us to do, to take, to share the pain, so to speak, and I think that's a first step. I also think that the state, if it were to adopt a similar plan that the county has, two-year budgeting, folks Patterson recently said that they're going to now go to a three-year budgeting pattern, and if the state adopted similar measures, I think they would find that they would have a better handle on the revenues and also the expenses. So, that, those are some of the things that I'm working on, and if there's any questions, I'm happy to take them.
May I appreciate the update? Yes, Councilwoman Corwin, you have a question?
Well, you bring up an interesting point, and I know that you have kind of led the call for, to change the health benefits for legislators, and also in terms of salary as well. I was watching Off the Record a couple weeks ago, and Tim Scubic was pointing out some of the issues in which makes it harder for people to do that. But how many, I'm wondering, Marty, how many people would just write a check back instead of going through all of the bill and passing a bill? How many legislators would actually return 10% of their pay by simply writing a check to the state of Michigan?
You're talking about self-policing ourselves?
I am, I am, because it's such a nice idea, and it seems overwhelming to get the votes, but I don't see anyone writing those checks.
In my view, we need legislative action. I mean, I think that would send a message that would be loud and clear, that most of us, most taxpayers in the state, their incomes are being cut. Their job security is not quite so secure. And the least we can do is legislatively reduce pay. My getting rid of docking legislative pay, there is another bill out there. My part would take the docking of pay and having it donated to charity. In my view, if we send it back to the state, they're just going to spend it in a way that I don't think is appropriate. And if you give it to a charity, at least you know that it's going to be spent wisely.
Are there other questions from council? Thank you. We appreciate you coming. Always nice to see you.
Thank you.
Our next item is very pleasurable, and that is that we have Portia Fields Anderson, and who is going to present the Michigan Recreation and Park Association Recreation Leadership Award to our own Carla Vaughn. And I see that our Director of Parks and Rec, Carol Anderson, is here too, so would you also come on down?
See, you just stole my phone.
For the picture?
(laughing) Thank you. It's nice to have you here. Carla, well-deserved honor here.
And I am Portia.
Yes, nice to see you.
And I was going to invite Carol to join us. So, I'm glad that you did. I am with Michigan Recreation and Park Association, where I've shared many, many years with all of your professionals that work for you. I, this is my sister here, as my last name, Ms. Anderson, so I guess. I just want you to know what an honor it is to help you say thank you to her.
Yes.
The state recognizes what many of their professionals do. The state meaning the Michigan Recreation and Park Association. Carla Vaughn has been one of those bottles of Elmer's glue within the recreation profession. She has been, and I am sure continues to be, the ultimate professional in word and deed. And it's the deeds that create our own personal rainbows, the rainbows that illuminate all the contributions that we make. Sitting back in the back with Carla, Carla said, "It's so nice when someone comes up to you and says, 'Man, I just can't, I just can't believe you do this,' and I'm so happy that you do, because what would I do if this program was not here? What would I do if I didn't have people like you to help us? Those of us in this profession, we live for other people's lives. We help enhance and create the lifestyles of those that can last for a lifetime." It is you, it's your community that benefit from the rainbow makers, such as Carla Vaughn and Carol too. The Michigan Recreation Park Association honors these efforts and all those contributions. Imagine a senior store that sells over $40,000 a year. Representative Nolenberg, you may want to take her to Lansing and help with that little problem.
No, we need her here.
You're going to keep her here, right?
No, we need her here.
Imagine a home improvement program where over 300 jobs were accomplished just last year. Imagine having someone like Carla in your midst that has been here for over 30 years. I just learned that we started in the profession together in the same year. That's a lot of contributions. She gets a paycheck every two weeks, like most folks, but it's the thank yous, it's the awards, it's all of those things that help create the feeling that there's more to be done, and I'm the one to do it. The Michigan Recreation and Park Association recognized her in front of her peers, and that's with the special plaque that I'm going to read through you in just a moment. I want you to share in that glory so that you know and that you recognize the contributions of your Carla Vaughn. Anyone that knows her knows that she is a quiet storm making a very big difference in the lives of the persons in your community. And that's why I want you to create this moment of déjà vu and applaud Carla Vaughn for the MRPA Award recipient for being the Recreation Leader of the Year for 2009. And remember, when you see a rainbow over your community, Carla helped make it. Her glowing programs are those different colors in that rainbow. When you see that rainbow, think of Carla, and remember that she shares her rainbow, and you should share it with her. The Michigan Recreation Park Association is very proud to be able to do this once again in front of her home community, the city of Troy, the Recreation Leadership Award, which was presented to her at the state conference. It's in recognition of her outstanding performance and dedicated efforts in the area of recreation services. Carla, for you.
Thank you, Portia. I'm very honored to receive this award, and it's great to work for a city that's so supportive and so progressive. And thank you for recognizing me here tonight.
Thank you. Carla? I think that, much, there. Thank you so much. It's very appropriate that Carla received that award, because we in Troy that have known her all these years have known that she was one of the ones doing, and your presentation was absolutely glorious, so thank you.
Thank you.
And next, we have another certificate of appreciation being presented to the city, and this is from the Clinton River Watershed Council for Continued Support and Membership. Welcome.
Thank you.
And I don't have your name, I'm sorry.
My name is Ann Vara. I'm the Executive Director of the Clinton River Watershed Council.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for having me here this evening. I appreciate it. And I'm very, very pleased to be here. It's the first time I've been in the board room, so it's a pleasure to be here. Thank you. We have a certificate of appreciation that we would like to present to the city of Troy, but before doing so, I'd like to just take a minute to talk a little bit about why we're here and what the Clinton River Watershed Council is. First of all, we're here to thank you. It's very meaningful to us that we have you and all of the other government municipal memberships in our community as members of the council. There's no way we could do what we do without your support. The Clinton River Watershed Council was founded 36 years ago by a group of citizens and interested government members wanting to do something that was the right thing to do, and that's protect water quality and our water resources. And they were very successful in doing so. In 1994, we became a 501(c)(3), and at that time, we asked governments to assist us in membership and partnership for funding, as well as partnerships for stakeholders and citizen involvement. The Clinton River Watershed has covered 760 square miles, the eastern half of Oakland County, all of Macomb, out to Lake St. Clair. So, we have the headwaters up in Springfield, and the water drains all the way from there out to Lake St. Clair. There's one and a half million people in our watershed. We have the most populated watershed in the state of Michigan. And so, that says a lot about this community, our community, and how different our watershed looks from the southern portion of the watershed up to the northern portion in the north branch where people are still farming today. So, we have all kinds of different folks in the watershed, and so it's very important to us that our stakeholders understand what we do and who we are. And again, there's no way we could do it without the support of you. We have 63 communities in our watershed and a handful outside, all who support us with membership and stormwater education dues through contracts. Troy is one of the very special communities, smack dab in the middle of our watershed. Our programs are supported through funding, not only through the government membership, but also businesses and private donors, individual donors. And as you well know, we're suffering greatly in this economy, but we're still here, and we're able to survive because of you. And we thank you for that. We have many programs that we put on. We graduate 4,500 students a year through our Stream Leader Program, and we're happy to say that we're finally bringing a Troy school on this year. We've gotten support through one of our business sponsors, REI Recreation and Equipment, and we're going to partner them with one of your schools, and it's a partner program where we partner businesses for funding and mentoring for students. We've graduated over 50,000 students from this program since we've been conducting this over 12, 15 years. We have an adult monitoring program with over 170, almost 200 volunteers. We monitor 35 sites over the watershed for water quality. We have a variety of other programs and events, and I think it's safe to say that Troy's River Day last year, that had over 100 volunteers, was the most well-attended, and had the most volunteers of any of our events through the watershed. We had 35 events, 2,500 volunteers. So, I was here at the tail end. I actually met Councilwoman Valtrami there, and we also have great support from Jennifer Lawson. I left her with some materials that she's going to make sure all of you have. I want to make sure you have a map of our watershed, a recent newsletter, and a little bit about who we are.
Yes, Jennifer and Steve are backing you up, so they're right behind you there.
Oh, there she is. So, without further ado, I'd like to present the certificate to the city of Troy in recognition of your partnership with the Clinton River Watershed Council. The council appreciates your continued support and membership.
And actually, I think that it's Steve and Jennifer that should be receiving it, because they're, yes, thank you.
Thank you very much.
We do appreciate it, and the efforts of staff and the citizens to be involved, it's very important. As we know, one of our great things about this state is all of our water, and we need to make sure that the water quality continues for many, many generations. And we have a lot of students here today, so it's good that they learn about this also.
Thank you. And I was so pleased to be here and see all of these students and your Congress person here, because it's really important, being a Great Lakes State. We have the most to win and the most to lose if we don't protect our water resources, and especially being in Michigan, being a Great Lakes State. So, it is very important, and what you do is very important to us. So, thank you very much.
Thank you so much. I think our Community Affairs Director, Cindy Stewart, would like to take a picture of all of you together there.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. That concludes the presentations, and we have no carryover items, but our first item is a public hearing, which is Michigan Next Energy exemptions. And Nino Lucari, our city assessor, will present to staff, and then we'll open the public hearing and call upon the folks from Michigan Next Energy. Good evening.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of council. Pleasure to be out and about this time of the year. Generally, just locked up in the house at this point. We're here for continuation, actually, is what this is, of Next Energy exemptions for Compact Power and United Solar Ovonics. They've had exemptions for, well, since 2006. Program was adopted at the state level to give property tax credits to companies that work in alternative energy fields to lessen our dependence on oil. And they do all kinds of different things. It's amazing the amount of work that they've done in a short amount of time, but it's not just battery technology, it's solar panels for your roof shingles, any number of different ideas. And what this does, this program does, is it exempts them from personal property taxes for any kind of personal property tax. It's not like an IFT exemption where they have to meet specific guidelines. All they have to do is qualify as an alternative energy company, and their personal property taxes are exempted. The local units of government, which would include the counties, the school districts, transportation tax, zoo tax that you now have, all of them can opt out, and many of them can opt out of this just by failing to pass a resolution to approve the exemption. Troy has passed these resolutions since 2006. The law sunsets in 2013. This particular exemption in front of you combined is about $1.9 million in market value, and I can't remember, oh, it's $19,500 in taxes over the five-year period. Management and staff is asking you to approve the exemption to keep it going. I have spoken with Mr. Dammcheck from the Troy School District. They will also be pushing to allow the exemption to go through. Oakland County is going to allow it to go through. And all of the minute taxes that they're responsible for, the zoo tax, the transportation tax, intermediate tax. The community colleges, I've never heard from them, even though I call them, but I'm assuming that they've, since they've never passed a resolution to opt out, that they're going to also accept this. One other thing that I need to mention, and Councilwoman Valtrami brought this up to my attention, and possibly just as a review for you, you'll note that Compact Power has several items on there that they were proposing to purchase. You might also notice that United Solar Ovonic originally proposed $7.9 million in property. The problem that occurs is that these applications are due on November 1st. Many of these companies don't know what they'll actually be able to purchase by the end of the year, and it's up to me as the assessor to verify the amounts, and I generally do that through their personal property returns. In the case of United Solar Ovonics, I wasn't able to do that because they had not filed, but I did contact their accountant, and he sent the new listing that you have at the back of your sheet that lists about $550,000. They were expecting a large government contract that fell through, so they did not purchase those items. And I was able to verify that Compact Power did purchase all of the items on the list by their personal property return. That is my responsibility, and in general, if you see me putting an amount on the memo, it's because I have been able to verify it. I have not put anything forward in front of you that I could not verify. With that, I can answer any questions you might have.
Questions from council for Mr. Lucari at this time? Seeing none, and I'll
Thank you.
...open the public hearing. Is there anyone that is here to speak on this item? Seeing none, then I'll close the public hearing and return it to the council.
No.
No, on this particular item?
No.
I'm sorry, Mr. Reinhard. I'll get to that in a little bit. Thank you. No one here on this item, then I'll return to the council table for a resolution. Councilwoman Corwin?
Resolved that Troy City Council hereby affirms the Michigan Next Energy exemption of alternative energy personal property located at 1100 West Maple and 1857 Technology Drive, Troy, Michigan, as certified by the city assessor in an amount not to exceed $1,970,456.31, a copy of which shall be attached to the original minutes of this meeting, and be it further resolved that Troy City Council hereby directs the city clerk to forward a copy of this resolution and attachments to the Michigan Next Energy Authority at 300 North Washington Square, Lansing, Michigan, 48913.
Moved by Councilwoman Corwin, seconded by Councilwoman Fleming, that we approve the resolution as printed and read. Discussion of the motion? The vote, Mrs. Bartholomew?
Mayor Shilling?
Yes.
Councilmember, what do you need? Yes.
Brumfield? Yes.
Eisenbacher?
No.
Fleming?
Yes.
Howerlack?
No.
Corwin? Yes.
Motion passes. I wish both of these companies well. I think that it's important for our future that we're involved in things that are going to be bringing us savings and also new technologies, and so I applaud them for their efforts in that way. Next, usually we don't have liquor violations at a regular council meeting, but we are this evening, and so our next items are liquor violations, which are hearings, and our city attorney, Lori Greg Bloom, is going to provide us with conducting these. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, and I am happy to report that we do not have any public hearings, because all of the persons who are scheduled for tonight, all of the licensees have waived their right to public hearing. We have called them all, and again, knowing that you have a full agenda, I'm attempting to expedite this as much as possible. So, with that, Mayor, I would just indicate that in the council packet, all of the incident reports, as well as the history of each licensee, are included. We are relying on that and ask that that be made part of the record, and therefore will not cover that unless council has a specific question about that. Okay, and your honor, the first one is Rite Aid of Michigan Inc., DBA, Rite Aid 2731. We have attorney Mike Brown, who is representing the Rite Aid Corporation, and also John Bozovich and Tim Lovell are here. They are not contesting this violation, which occurred on May 21st of 2008. Would also indicate that there has been adjudication at the Michigan Liquor Control Commission. They have paid a $700 fine. And with that, your honor, I would turn it over to Mr. Brown, unless council has questions.
Counsel, do you have questions, of Mrs. Bloom, before we call the, does Mr. Brown want to speak for them? Yes, Mr. Brown? Good evening.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of the council. I am Michael Brown, attorney for Rite Aid of Michigan, or Rite Aid Corporation. I represent the company on liquor licensing matters throughout the state of Michigan. I have been before you before on matters for Rite Aid. I have with me at the table, Mr. John Bozovich, who is the district manager responsible for the stores in Troy and the surrounding area. I also have Mr. Tim Lovell, who is the store manager from this particular store, numbered 2731. Again, in the interest of time, I'll try and keep my remarks short and simply take your questions if you have any. But we do acknowledge the violation. We did so at Liquor Control Commission. We have paid the fine that resulted from that violation, in keeping with Rite Aid's standard policies and procedures governing the sale of alcohol to minor. The sales clerk involved in this transaction was immediately terminated from employment. We have also gone back and done a retraining, knowing how this council stresses training in response to these type of violations. We did go ahead and schedule a Techniques of Alcohol Management, or TAM, training course for all of the employees at the store who are regularly involved in the sale of alcohol or who work the cash registers. That training was completed on December 2nd and December 3rd. We then did tender to the Troy Police Chief the evidence of the training with copies of all of the certification cards for each employee, so that the Troy police would know that as of December, we had conducted that training that we anticipated would come out of this process eventually anyway, sort of figuring that if we're going to do training, let's do it earlier so that we get the maximum benefit for them having gotten that refresher course. That is on top of the normal in-store training that Rite Aid regularly conducts for all of its employees, so this was a way of reinforcing that message. I would also note that this particular location I would also note that this particular location for Rite Aid, since 2000, since the year 2000, has passed 19 other decoy operations conducted by the Troy Police Department. It has also passed 37 different liquor inspections conducted by the Troy Police Road Patrol, never having failed any of those liquor inspections since 2000. So obviously, any error in selling to a minor is too many, but I want to reinforce, and Mr. Bozovich and Mr. Lowell here, to reinforce the fact that we do take these very seriously and do make every attempt to try and eliminate them from the store. So with respect to this particular matter, I know we have another one next on the agenda also for a different store, but with respect to this particular matter, that would conclude my remarks, unless you have questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Other questions from council on this? I think you anticipated, and rightly so, the things that we were going to ask of you, and that is that the employee that sold to the minor was terminated at the time, because we know that's your policy at Rite Aid, and also the fact that you know that we expect the retraining of everyone, and you've already anticipated that. And the other thing is, we're expecting of all the Rite Aid stores, that they are going to be very stringent in their sale of alcohol, because this community is very aware and very cognizant of the effects that it can have on the population, and so therefore, we ask you to be very aware of that. Hopefully, we're not going to see anybody from Rite Aid back here next year for violations. That is really our goal, is to not have these violations, whether it's a compliance test or something else that occurs. We feel very strongly about it here.
I would note, one other thing I failed to mention in my initial remarks, is that at this particular location, Rite Aid, in addition to doing the training, did go out and purchase four identification checking devices, or ID scanners, to place at each of the cash registers in the store, and we did provide evidence of that purchase to the police chief for him to also have in his records, so that in addition to the training, now the store is equipped at each register with an ID scanning device to help the sales clerks.
Okay, thank you. Questions or comments? Councilwoman Isabacher?
That was my question about the automatic scanning. Is that a scanner tied into your registers?
Yes.
Yes, okay, good.
Any other questions? Thank you. Anything else, Mrs. Bloom, that you'd like to add at this time?
Hi, your honor, may I have any questions?
No, no questions. We'll return it then for a resolution from council on this item. Who wants to move this forward?
Madam Mayor.
Councilwoman Beltrameany?
I would move the resolution as written, that we recommend, except I would delete the be it further resolved, but the city council requires the licensee to have all its management and employees. They just did that and provided proof in January, so I would delete that paragraph. And other than that, I would move the resolution as printed.
Well, I was going to suggest that that paragraph be reworded, that we do, we still require it, and that they, we could add that they have provided proof. I think it's important that we recommend that in our resolution also. Let's ask Mrs. Bloom. Mrs. Bloom?
Your honor, the benefit of having it in there is that for future, it will be in there for future reference. We always do indicate in the license history, the action that was taken, and it could be amended if that is the choice of council.
Okay, thank you. Do you want to, before someone seconds?
I don't want to wordsma, I, I, I'm unprepared to wordsmith that. If the, if the city attorney wants to do that, that's fine, but I, I'm unprepared to do that, just, because I can't.
Okay. Is it sufficient that we leave the res, the wording, Mrs. Bloom, as is? We know that they have done that, but the wording in the resolution would remain the same? Correct?
You could do it that way, or you could say that instead of requires, you could say required with a D.
Or recognizes that.
And recog, yeah, exactly. It recognizes that the training has occurred within the last 90 days and proof has been provided to the Troy Police Department.
That works for me. Support?
Moved by Councilwoman Beltrameany, seconded by Councilwoman Kerwin, that we approve the resolution as amended. Then may we have the vote? Mrs. Bartholomew?
Councilwoman Ewing?
Yes.
Isabacher?
Yes.
Fleming?
Yes.
Howard?
Yes.
Kerwin?
Yes.
Mayor Kelly?
Yes. Motion passes. Thank you. And Mrs. Bloom, the second one, which is also Rite Aid, but this one on Maple.
Yes, Mayor, this is Rite Aid Discount Pharmacy, DBA Rite Aid 4305, and this is the operation at 2971 West Maple. Again, your honor, this is not a contested violation. It has already been adjudicated at the MLCC, and again, we have attorney Michael Brown, who is here to represent Rite Aid. I would just also indicate that Sergeant John Schafler of the Police Department and I are prepared to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you. Questions from Mrs. Bloom or Sergeant Schafler at this time? Seeing none, and Mr. Brown? There's a different record with this store.
Yes, thank you. And one of the things I'd like to clarify right off the beginning is, with respect to the record on this store, you will note that a lot of those violations occurred many, many years ago and were prior to 1998, which is the year that Rite Aid acquired Perry Drug Stores, and all of the violations you see listed prior to 1998 would have been under the prior Perry Drug Store ownership. So if we look at simply the violation record since 1998, we do see one violation in October of 1999, and then this most recent violation here in October of 2008. So when we put it in that context, the violation history changes dramatically from what you would have seen in your notes without having that background. I would also note that with respect to this particular store, since 1999, or when Rite Aid acquired this particular location, it has passed 21 separate compliance checks conducted by the Troy Police Department, and it has passed 35 of the liquor inspections during that period of time. So again, in the last roughly 10 or 11 years since 1998, we had one prior violation to this matter, but we had passed 21 times and passed 35 different inspections without any incidents. Again, with respect to this store, in anticipation of this meeting and the city of Troy's requirements in these matters, we did conduct additional Techniques of Alcohol Management, or TAM, training for the employees at this location. There were 21 different people who went through the training on December 2nd and December 3rd. Again, we provided copies of all of their certification cards, indicating that they passed that training to Chief Kraft on December 15th. We also, at that time, provided Chief Kraft with evidence of the fact that this particular store had also purchased four different ID scanning devices to be placed at the cash registers of this location. So each of the two stores involved in the matters before you tonight have gone ahead and purchased ID scanning machines for their cash registers. And so I think that provides all the background that I wanted to give you. Oh, I guess I should also note, so it goes on the record, that the employee involved in this transaction was also terminated from employment immediately after the incident occurred, once we were notified by Troy Police of the violation that evening. So I, I will say on behalf of Rite Aid, this is probably my last opportunity to address you, that we have enjoyed our relationship with Troy Police Department, and as much as I do not look forward to getting these violations, it is always somewhat refreshing when we see the officers at the Liquor Control Commission hearings. They are always very cordial and very helpful to us in recognizing some of the efforts that Rite Aid does with them on loss prevention initiatives and other things, and they have acknowledged that to me when I have seen them at the Liquor Control Commission hearings, and they have made sure that the Liquor Control Commission is aware of the fact that there are some things that Rite Aid does collaboratively with the Troy Police Department, and I just wanted to acknowledge those matters as well with the time that we had here today. So, thank you.
Questions from council? Councilwoman Isabacher?
Have you considered putting in the ID scanners in all the stores throughout the city, not just the ones that had the violations?
We have, and now with these two added to the one or two that we had previously done, we're almost to that point now, anyway, and there is obviously a little bit of investment associated with doing it each time, and this is a tough time for all retail. So during a different economy, I think there'd probably be a much easier push at a corporate level to do that on a more widespread basis. I certainly would be open to taking that back to them. Obviously, Mr. Bozovich is here, and hearing that comment, I will let him consider it and take it up the corporate management as he sees fit. It is something that has been considered, yes.
Yeah, because the fines and your, and the cost of having an attorney present can't be that insignificant compared to the cost of the scanners.
True.
Councilwoman Kerwin, you want to?
This question regarding the scanners, because this was a date of birth request, and that's how that happened. So now, the requirement is that the employee will always ask for the driver's license and always scan it. Is that correct? Is that your understanding?
Well, that was always the requirement before, and again, the human element associated with these stores is that people don't always follow their training, they don't always follow the rules, but the, the policy in place, the rules in place have always mandated that they ask for and physically look at a photo identification. So the salesperson involved in this transaction had already violated the company policy by not requiring that as the initial method of determining the ID or the age. So with the ID scanners in place, nothing about that policy has changed, and obviously, you always hope that your employees follow the policy to the letter. Unfortunately, they don't, and a lot of times, that's when these circumstances arise, because it clearly is not in Rite Aid's best interest to have any of these violations, and it is very expensive for me to be here, for the fines to be paid, and so forth. So there is no incentive to violate the law, and if we could figure out a foolproof method of making sure that every employee in every single one of the thousands of transactions that they do each day and each week follow those policies, we wouldn't even have to worry about installing ID scanners. But they don't always follow the rules, they don't always follow the policies, no matter how many times you remind them, and so the ID scanner is a backup system, if you will. But the, the most important element of the whole thing is always going to be, does that employee follow their training, follow the rules, and, and do what they have been told to do by management, which is ask for and look at and carefully examine a photo ID with every sale that is questionable.
I understand that, and I hope that you do stress the paramount importance that this community has regarding this issue.
Yes.
This is just not any other community when it comes to this.
I would wholeheartedly agree with that.
Thank you.
Further questions from Mr. Brown? Thank you.
Thank you.
Mrs. Bloom, anything else on this matter? No? Okay, thank you. Then the resolution, this one also would need the change. Councilwoman Isabacher?
I will move the resolution as printed with the same change as the last resolution.
Support?
Moved by Councilwoman Isabacher, seconded by Councilwoman Kerwin, that we approve the resolution as amended, as was previously. Discussion? The vote, Mrs. Bartholomew?
Councilwoman Ewing?
Yes.
Isabacher?
Yes.
Fleming?
Yes.
Howard?
Yes.
Kerwin?
Yes.
Mayor Kelly?
Yes.
Councilwoman Ewing?
Yes.
Motion passes. Our next is 711 on Crooks Road.
Yes, thank you. It's 1650 Crooks Road, and again, this is a violation that is not contested, occurred on February 21st of 2008, and attorney Elaine Poehl is here, as well as Mr. Gamble and Mr. Hussein from 711. And it has been adjudicated at the Michigan Liquor Control Commission, and I'm available to answer any other questions that you may have.
Questions from Mrs. Bloom? Seeing none? Yes, Mrs. Poehl?
Good evening
Good evening.
... and council. Thank you for hearing from us this evening. Hi, my name's Elaine Poehl, I represent 711, Inc. 711 stores are franchised locations, so as a result, 711, Inc. and the franchisee are co-licensees on the liquor licenses. So we have 711, Inc. and Noir Enterprises, Inc. as the co-licensees at this store. The president of Noir Enterprises is Ahmad Raza, who is the franchisee, and unfortunately, he can't be here tonight. He asked us to send his regards and let you know that he's thinking of us this evening. But the store's manager, his manager, Ajar Hussein, is here with us this evening, as well as Ed Gamble. He is 711's corporate representative for this store. And Mr. Gamble has been with 711 for 24 years. He has worked with this store in particular for the past two years. Mr. Hussein has been the manager there for approximately a year now, and also had prior work with, with 711 at other stores as well. Mr. Raza and his corporation, Noir Enterprises, have been co-licensees at this location since 2000, so for the past nine years, or approximately eight, nine years. This violation occurred in February of 2008. We admitted that the violation occurred. We negotiated a settlement at the Liquor Control Commission hearing resulting in a $700 fine. Since that violation, the store has passed four decoy operations successfully, two with your police department, as well as two with the commission. Prior to that, the store had passed three controlled by operations with your police department in 2007. There are many, as you know, before that, and you have the materials demonstrating that, but I believe there have been approximately 22 decoy operations passed since Mr. Raza's tenure at this, at this location. We offer no excuses, and any violation is absolutely unacceptable to both 711 and to you, I know, as well as to Mr. Hussein and Mr. Raza. However, we do believe this, this store has good management in place and good employees. One thing that Mr. Hussein has done since he's been there is, is take a fresh look at the employees at this location. He himself brought two longstanding employees with him when he came to the store. Since this violation, also, the, all of the store's employees have been retrained in 711's Come of Age Training Program, which is the internal program that they use throughout the country, but also has a focus on Michigan liquor licensing. I'm also pleased to report that through discussions with the Liquor Control Commission, we have had 711's internal corporate trainers certified as TIPS trainers, and 711 is, 711 is encouraging its franchisees, strongly recommending to its franchisees, that all of their employees also be certified in a TIPS training program. It's difficult, because under the franchise agreement, the store-level employees at a franchised store are not corporate employees, they're the franchisee's own employees. However, you know, usually when 711 strongly recommends something, we see it happen, so we're pleased with that development, and we think it's very positive, a positive thing. This store has scheduled its employees to attend a TIPS training through its, through our corporate trainers in this month, middle of the month. In this particular incident involved a decoy where the clerk asked the purchaser for identification, but proceeded with the sale even though the purchaser said he did not have it. He said he was 22 years old, she asked for the ID, and he said he didn't have it, she proceeded with the sale in any event, and as a result of this incident, she no longer works at the store. There are also There's also a sign posted at the register, so that if a customer gives a clerk a hard time, the clerk can point to the sign right there and say, "I've got to do it, it's my job, it's our store policy to ask for your ID." 7-Eleven also in the last year has implemented or offered to its franchisees its own internal mystery shop program, which this store has participated in for, it's been probably in existence for nine months or so. And in that program, there is a, it's not a minor, it's a young adult, 22, 23 years old, who makes, attempts to make a purchase of an age-restricted products, whether it's alcohol or cigarettes. And if the clerk asks for ID, they get a green card. If they fail to ask for ID, they get a red card. And this store has participated, like I said, since that program became available, and has passed every single mystery shop internal as well. So, this store does strive to be a positive member of your community. We're happy to be doing business in Troy, and we hope you're happy to have us as well, and we'd like to continue to be here and operate with you and work with you. And we all are more than happy to answer any questions.
Other questions, counsel, for Mr. Poehl or for the franchisee? Yes, Councilman Fleming?
Yes. Have you considered the ID scanning machine?
We have, and I, I'm sorry I neglected to mention it. Yes. Right now, the 7-Eleven automated register system does not have a scanner. It requires a clerk to punch in a birth date. And we have recommended and see certain franchisees get their own scanning device. But you know, of course, the problem is it's not hooked up to the register. It certainly would be helpful, and I think it probably would be appropriate for this location to investigate that and purchase some scanning devices for the registers. But again, in conjunction with the Liquor Control Commission, 7-Eleven is working to upgrade its register system so that, so that it is, that there is a scanning capability tied into the register, so that there would be a lockout capability if the driver's license was not accurate or appropriate for that purchase.
Further questions from Mr. Poehl this time? Thank you. You said the employee, the person that sold is no longer with the?
With the store. She's an employee, correct?
Yes, thank you. Thank you. Anything else, Mrs. Bloom? No? All right. The resolution is before us, and I know they said their training is coming up, but so the wording that's in the agenda is appropriate. Councilman Eisenbacher?
Yes, I'd like to move the resolution as printed.
Moved by Councilman Eisenbacher, seconded by Councilwoman Beltramini, that we approve the resolution that is printed, that requires the licensee to have its, all its management and employees that are permitted to sell alcoholic liquor to the TIPS or TAMs trained and to provide proof to the training, of this training to the Troy Police Department within 90 days. Further discussion of the motion? The vote then, Mrs. Bartholomew?
Yes.
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 Motion passes. And Mrs. Bloom, Arbor Drugs, CBS?
Yes, thank you. This is, there are two Arbor Drugs, again, unfortunately. This one is 2045 West South Boulevard, and present today is Dan Schimmer, who is the district manager, and Mark Parent, who is the store manager. The violation for sale of alcohol to a minor on May 20th of 2008 is not contested. The matter has been adjudicated at the Michigan Liquor Control Commission. And Your Honor, I would also just indicate that in this one, there is a little unique fact to point out, in that there has been a transfer to Woodward Detroit LLC, and I just wanted to make note of that, that occurred in November of 2008. And Sergeant Schoffler and I are available to answer any questions that you may have about this, but again, we rely on the police report and the history, which are found in your booklet, and would turn it over without questions.
Okay, thank you. Yes.
Good evening. I'm Mark Parent, I'm the store manager of this particular CBS. This is my boss, Dan Schimmer, district manager. Well, basically, I just wanted to go over things we're doing differently to make sure this doesn't happen again. First and foremost, all employees are terminated if they do sell to a minor, cigarettes or cigarettes, tobacco, or alcohol. This particular store, we did have the TIPS training before this violation, so all of my employees that are currently working with me, except for two, have gone through the training for the TIPS. It's a four-hour alcohol training for anybody that's not aware of it. Also, our company requires all employees to take a biannual compliance training, which is, which involves alcohol, tobacco, and also pseudoephedrine products. So, we, twice a year, they're required to take that assessment and to make sure, as managers, we're meant to make sure that they do all pass that assessment, so. Also, my job, basically, I follow up with them every single day between shifts, just to know, just so they know that's very important, to not sell to minors. Unfortunately, a mistake was made, but I have pretty good confidence that, you know, in the future, all my employees know that selling to minors, it's pretty much unforgivable, and it's not right, so. Also, with this particular selling to a minor, I was, I received a coach-in counseling, which is also CBS policy, that store management is also culpable for whatever happens while, while they're running that particular store, so. That's all I have, if there's any questions at all from the council members.
Council members, do you have questions for the manager at this time? Councilman Eisenbacher?
The same question that Councilman Fleming and, and Councilwoman Kerwin asked. Do you guys have, or do you intend to have, automatic scanners?
Currently, we do not have any automatic scanners. We have the punch-in-the-date system right now. I'm not aware of us receiving one anytime soon, unfortunately.
Does your system, is it programmed so that if a date is repetitively input, that it flags your checker?
That I'm not, I'm sure, I'm not sure of as well. No, I don't think so.
Okay, because we've had, because in order to make this sale, the checker had to put in a date, correct?
Yes, on this particular transaction, that was correct. The cashier asked the minor for the ID, they said they didn't have it, and she just put in a date that was over the age of 21, correct? Yes.
Okay, because that has been a repetitive excuse that we've received at, at these hearings.
Yes.
I have a question. I was reviewing the record that goes back to when this store first had its license here, and up until the 2007 failure of the compliance test, and then this one in 2008, the store has had a good record. So, what changed? Was it just the employee making a mistake? Has anything?
Yeah, it could have been that. I wasn't around for the 2007 violation, I was for the 2008. Yeah, it was just a mistake on her part. She was on leave of absence, so she was, wasn't with us for two months. I don't know if she got out of the habit of checking IDs. As part of our training process is to check IDs with every single liquor and tobacco transaction, so, yeah, I'm not sure why she made the mistake, but unfortunately, she did make the mistake. And like you said, we did have a clean record before this, besides the 2007 violation, which I wasn't here for, but, like I said, we're doing everything we can to try to prevent these things from happening, because personally, myself, I, I take it as, I don't like to see those kind of things happening in my store. I don't think it's right to sell to minors, and all kinds of bad things happen when minors get a hold of alcohol, you know, drunk driving accidents, you know, terrible things, so we, we definitely believe in not, in not selling to minors, obviously.
How often, other than the, the TIPS and, or TAMs training, how often are the employees reminded of their responsibilities?
Yeah, like I said, it's a daily thing between shifts. All my managers know that we're supposed to be telling all the employees that you need to be checking IDs in every single alcohol transaction, regardless of age, doesn't matter how old the person is. And I think if you, you know, asked our regular customers, they would tell you that we do check their IDs, it doesn't matter of the age.
So, they're reminded each day?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions, counsel?
Madam Mayor?
Yes, Councilman Fleming?
Have you considered your own decoy program?
What's that?
Have you considered your own decoy program, where you have people come in?
Not that I'm aware of, sir, no.
Because with two violations within a year apart, and you received the proof of the training on May 16th of '08, and then the violation occurred on May 21st of '08, somebody's not getting the message, or everybody's not getting the message. So, maybe, just a suggestion, you might want to have your own decoy program. I know you had a good record prior to that, but this is too close for conference.
Absolutely. Two in a row, like two in two years is not, you know, something that we're proud of at all, sir.
Any others?
Thank you. Mrs. Bloom, anything else? No? Okay, thank you. The resolution then is before us. Councilman Fleming?
I'll move the resolution as printed.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Fleming, seconded by Councilman Eisenbacher, that we approve the resolution as printed, and that is with the stipulation that Troy City Council requires the licensee Arbor Drugs located in the city of Troy to have all the management employees that are permitted to sell alcoholic liquor, TIPS or TAMs trained, and provide proof to this training to the Troy Police Department within 90 days. And, you know, in addition to doing that, folks, the other thing that we do is that all the reference violations that occur within the year are published in the local newspaper in general circulation, and so it is out there in the community, the, the information that is there. That is part of our resolution, it's something we've done for a number of years. The vote, Mrs. Bartholomew?
Yes.
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 Motion passes. Next is ADI Realty, but it's CBS on John R. Mrs. Bloom?
Yes, again, this is another one that's a CBS store. This is the one at 4963 John R. And again, this is not contested, being contested, this occurred on February 21st of 2008. It has already been adjudicated at the Michigan Liquor Control Commission, and with me today is Jeff Johnson, who is the store manager. And unless you have questions of Sergeant Schoffler, or I will give him the microphone.
Other questions for Sergeant Schoffler or Mrs. Bloom at this time? Seeing none, then, Mr. Johnson? Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you for letting me speak. What, I'd like to reiterate what Mr. Parent had said. We do have daily meetings with our employees.
You want to move the mic up just a bit ago? Thank you.
We do have daily meetings with our employees. We take it very seriously. Any type of violation that comes back to our store is, especially liquor, is something that's taken very seriously. The, I was not the manager at the store at this time last year, but the employee that sold is no longer there. She was terminated, as well as one of the management staff that was there at the time also. We are proactive as a company. The violation occurred on the 21st of February, and we went and had the training. All the store employees have been trained with the TAM on 3/8, so we were, we got them right into the training, just to reiterate to them that, how important this is. Like I said, we, we just can't afford that, and to be a retailer, we have to check our IDs and validate every single customer. So, that's what we do on a daily basis now.
Okay, and, oh, go ahead.
No, no, I was just going to say, if there's anything more, any questions that you have for me, I'm very willing to answer them for you.
Thank you. Questions, counsel? Councilman Kerwin?
I understand that you weren't the manager. The concern is in seeing the violation in less than a year apart.
Right, I saw that. Like I said, as, as acting manager there, I follow up daily with my employees. We have a meeting in the morning, as well as we do in shift change, we let them know that we have had a few stings in there, and we've passed recently. So, I let them know that it's, it's their job, it's going to cost them money, it's going to cost them financially, and it's just something that has to be done. So, the training is ongoing, and it's daily.
I know Rite Aid's policy is always, you sell, you're terminated.
Yes.
And that is yours as well?
Yes. Definitely.
And you said the manager also left, or it was terminated?
The manager didn't leave, the, I believe it was the shift supervisor that was there at the time also was terminated.
And that, is that also the policy, the company policy?
That's not the policy, but, but I, like I said, I'm not real sure what happened last year in that store.
Had to do with the circumstances of the event?
The circumstances of not being there, but I do know that two people were let go because of the incident.
Okay, thank you. Further questions? Councilwoman Beltramini?
Mr. Johnson, how, thank you for being here.
Thank you.
How often do you have your staff retrained and recertified?
We have a biannual compliance, which every employee has to do once a year, as well as the daily training.
Okay, so you're, you're due again. If they were retrained the 8th of March in '08, this is the 2nd of March in '09?
That was, that's not our company, that was the TAM string that I have, that we assigned them to.
And how often do you have them ever retrained for TAMs?
I'm not aware of that, if they go back and retrain again after they've done it, passed it the one time. But we do do it once a year as a company also, but they have to go back in into our CBS learn net and do it all over, so keep it fresh in their mind.
Thank you.
Further questions? Thank you. Anything else, Mrs. Bloom? No? Thank you. Then could we have a resolution for this one? Councilman Eisenbacher?
Based on the questions from Councilwoman Beltramini, it appears that they are due for training. I will move the resolution as presented, including TIPS or TAMs training for the, all the management employees.
Support.
And providing the proof.
Yes.
Moved by Councilman Eisenbacher, seconded by Councilwoman Kerwin, that we approve the resolution as printed. Discussion? The vote, Mrs. Bartholomew?
Yes.
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 Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Lucky's Market, which is located on John R.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, we do, we have, the licensee is MK2, but it is Lucky's Mark, doing business at Lucky's Market at 4835 John R. And again, Your Honor, this violation is not contested. It did occur on 5/21 of 2008, and representing the licensee is Michael Conja. He is here, and I believe his father is also here. They can answer any additional questions that you might have, and we have proposed a resolution for your consideration, and it does set forth their previous history of liquor violations.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Mrs. Bloom, before we have her come forward? Yes, Mr. Conja? Both Mr. Conjas, correct?
I am junior. I'm a junior, and that's my father, a senior. I just want to, first of all, apologize to you all, because last year I was here before you guys, and I promise you guys I won't be back here doing this again. Unfortunately, due to circumstances, we are here before you guys again, begging for forgiveness. Hopefully, you guys will understand that my father's an older gentleman, he conducted both of them himself. He retired in 99 from Chrysler, I put him back to work in '05 at the store. You know, we go through a daily day basis now, every day, we got three different points of sale now, right in front of him, to prove to him that he has a manual sign that he has to change every day, to remind him of the age of the person. He has another one, 21, before he puts that money in the register, he has to remember is that person over 21 or not. Yeah, I've done a few things between me and him, unfortunately, due to the times, and it's my father, I cannot terminate him from the business. So, me and him are kind of stuck together like a little mom-and-pa shop, trying to do our He retired in ninety nine from Chrysler, I put him back to work in oh five at the store. You know, we go through a daily day basis now, every day, we got three different points of sale now, right in front of him, to prove to him that, he has a manual sign that he has to change every day, to remind him of the age of the person. He has another one twenty one, before he puts that money in the register, he has to remember, is that person over twenty one or not? Yeah, I've done a few things between me and him, unfortunately, due to the times, and it's my father, I cannot terminate him from the business. So me and him are kinda stuck together like a little mom and pop shop, trying to do our best in an everyday community. And we do apologize to you guys and the community, say our sorry, hopeful for forgiveness, just like when he went through Martone. Does Martone forgive them? Hopefully, you guys can see the light, and hopefully forgive them too. Martone did state on the record that our store is not a problem. I do try very hard, I don't condone, I have zero tolerance for kids, it's just not worth it. My family, my father put his retirement out, along with our house, so I would not want to lose that for the life of me.
Who else works at the store?
Just me and my father. I work about eighty-one hours a week, he's about thirty. I have employees, but they do bottles and coolers, they don't touch my registers.
Okay, thank you.
How many hours per week?
Eighty-one.
Wow.
Since oh five.
Any other questions, Councilman Kirwin?
It was just a comment. I know that you, you have a prime location for kids, and I can verify that you've been very cautious around kids. However, you might begin to, and you were before us last year talking about some of the precautions that you took. However, you might even think about the judgment of selling at all during certain hours, because the penalties that will accrue as the results of other violations will really hurt you and hurt the store, so that it might be, in fact, during certain hours that you simply say we're not selling at this point, and make your other incidental sales. It's just a suggestion.
Something we have to take into consideration. Appreciate it.
Any other questions from, at this time? Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Mrs. Bloom, anything else you want to add?
No, I did want to say that it has been adjudicated at the MLCC as well, so I hope that I stated that.
Okay, thank you. Then we have a resolution before us this evening. Who wishes to move this one? Councilman Fleming?
I'll move the resolution as, as printed.
Support.
Moved by Councilman Fleming, seconded by Councilwoman Kirwin, that we approve the resolution as printed, and that is the requirement that we've required of the others, that the licensee have all its employees that are permitted to sell liquor, tips or Tams trained, and provide proof to the training to the Troy Police Department within ninety days. Further discussion? Mrs. Bartholomew, the vote?
Councilwoman Kirwin?
Yes.
Mayor Shilly?
Yes.
Councilwoman Bellamy?
Yes.
Kirwin?
Yes.
Eisenbacher?
Yes.
Fleming?
Yes.
Harland?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you again.
We, next year we don't want to see you here.
The only thing we can promise you is that we'll check all these, that's the only thing I can promise now. I won't promise no one back, I promise I check all these every time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next year, next we have the K-Mark Corporation on, Big K, on Maple Road. Mrs. Bloom?
Yes, and this is, again, another one that is not contesting, and again, we rely on the police report, which is contained in the agenda packet, and also the history, which is set forth in the proposed resolution. This one occurred on December thirtieth of two thousand and eight, and it, the violation has been admitted at the MLCC, but we do not know at this point in time what penalty the MLCC is going to be imposing. But it is not contested here or at the MLCC. And I have Jeff Grossberg, who is the store manager, who is here on behalf of K-Mark, unless you have any questions of Sergeant Schoffler.
Questions at this time from, for Mrs. Bloom? Mr. Goldberg?
Grossberg.
Grossberg, excuse me.
Madam Mayor, and members of the council, I do want to first and foremost apologize. I can't tell you how frustrated I was for this to have happened to me for a second time, it was, been a little bit over a year, and the very next day, I eliminated the cashiers from selling alcohol, period, and I've moved it, the responsibility, to my supervisors that have all been tips trained, with the exception of one that's been promoted, and I do have plans to have her tips trained, and a new assistant manager as well. But my management team has all been tips trained. This was a situation where the associate asked for a birth date and keyed it in without looking at the identification, and when asked why she did what she did, she had no excuse. She said she was trained and knew better, and just did the wrong thing. So I'm trying to narrow the people that are permitted to sell alcohol to just my supervisory staff at the front of the store, and hopefully that'll, because I, you know, there's, I, I have, since May of oh eight, I've turned thirty-five cashiers over. It's a high-turning area of the store. In addition to that, the sales of our alcohol compared to our total volume is less than one-half of a percent. So we're able to control much better the sale of alcohol, and it seems to be, seems to be working, so.
Questions for Mr. Grossberg at this time, from counsel? Councilman Eisenbacher?
Do you have all the barcodes of alcoholic beverages, flags that they can't?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes, absolutely.
Other questions? Thank you. Mrs. Bloom, is there any other item? No? Okay, thank you. We have a resolution before us, counsel?
Madam Mayor?
Councilman Kirwin?
I'll move the resolution as printed.
Support.
Moved by Councilwoman Kirwin, seconded by Councilman Eisenbacher, that we approve the resolution, and that the council requires the licensee to have the management and employees that are permitted to sell alcohol, liquor, tips or Tams trained, and provide proof of the training to the Troy Police Department within ninety days. Discussion? The vote, Mr. Bartholomew?
Mayor Shilly?
Yes.
Councilwoman Bellamy?
Yes.
Kirwin?
Yes.
Eisenbacher?
Yes.
Fleming?
Yes.
Harland?
Yes.
Harland?
Yes.
Motion passes. Anything else, Mrs. Bloom?
No, Your Honor, we do have another seven of them for the next council meeting.
Right, for the twenty-third.
So hopefully if this procedure has worked, as well as it can work, hopefully we will repeat that.
Okay, well, hopefully next year we're not gonna have as many, this is via three meetings to do this. Okay, thank you. Counsel, we do have at least four people that wish to speak under items that are not on the agenda, and so I'm going to suggest that we take a break now, and come back for those items, and then continue, because it'll be close to the time, so. We'll take a ten-minute break and be back to begin at nine o'clock.
You know what, I'm gonna wait, you'll see me. I'll put it here.
Council is back in session and we are on to the next part of the agenda. There are no postponed items, so our next item of business is public comment, which is limited to items that are not on the agenda. And I will call on the folks in order that they signed up. And so the first person is Paul Beck.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Council. I just have one question, and the question is, why is the city assessor keeping two sets of books for assessing? One, he puts out on the internet that anybody can grab, and then the other one, he keeps for his own personal use. And if you want samples of it, I have them. I will be glad to pass them on to you later on.
The city assessor's authority comes from the state on what he must be required to do. I just wanted to let you know that that authority comes from the state.
Well, sure, but did you ever hear of the company called Enron down in Texas?
Of course.
They had two sets of books, and it's called Cooked Books. What they use for internal use and what they put out for public information were two different things. And the assessor is doing that right here with the assessing records.
Mr. Beck, yes, I'm gonna call on Councilman Bell to me.
Mr. Beck, you said that you had evidence of that.
Yes, I do.
Would you please turn that over to the city attorney so that she and the police department can see what needs to be done?
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And the only name, I don't see a first name. I just see McLand here.
Margaret.
Margaret McLand. That's all right. We did get your data that you provided us here too, so thank you.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
I know, you folks are here from Emerald Lake Village.
Yes.
And we appreciate you waiting to come to this meeting to speak, and sorry that it had to also be the liquor violations, which I didn't anticipate when I originally asked you to switch over, so thank you for being patient.
Sure, you're welcome. And thank you for this opportunity for the council and the mayor. My name is Margaret McLand, and I'm the lake chair of Emerald Lakes Village, and I'm really here to represent 550 homes. First, we want to thank the city for listening to us and for the help that we are receiving after our meetings with Brian Murphy last year. We have discovered that projects are in progress, and the pictures you see before you are pictures depicting what our water quality used to look like, pictures one and two, I numbered them just because I don't want to spend a lot of time pointing. And then three through nine represent what we've experienced over the last few years. The six lakes in our community were developed as lakes, even though the city engineers like to call them retention ponds, so we really like to think of them as lakes. They've always been utilized that way, they've been advertised, sold, and even more importantly, taxed as lake property. Oakland County also tests our beach sites because they view us as a lake. And the point we really want to make is that the continuing decline in our water quality has tremendous consequences. Number one would be our property values. A decreased tax base means less revenue for the city, and none of us need that at this time. There are new studies from Kansas City where they actually put a monetary value on the decline of water quality, where property value can decline about 15 percent. I've enclosed the article in your packet from the Muskegon Chronicle. And even in a good economy, with the pictures you see before you, you really could not sell a home. Number two, the consequence would be a major health concern. I don't know if any of you have heard about the blue-green toxic algae, but it is a common threat coming into our state. They've had sightings of it on the Great Lakes. There have been reported deaths of animals and children becoming sick. There's really not a good way to test for this blue-green algae, and it is a threat. I just attended a U of M aquaculture conference where they talked a lot about that as well. But after our meetings with Brian Murphy, we asked him specifically to help us by cleaning our storm drains one time per year and problematic drains twice a year. And there were about 14 ones that we thought were problems. Currently, the schedule is that the storm drains are cleaned once every three years. You might ask, why are we focusing on storm drains? That is because over the last three years, we've spent a lot of resource, time, and energy investigating why our water quality is declining, because we're not trying to blame just one area. We've hired professionals, we've had professional water analysis. I've enclosed a list of the professionals that we've utilized over the past three years, fish biologists, water specialists. And all those professionals agree that stormwater runoff is the major contribution to our poor water quality. If you note specifically in pictures three and nine, you will see this type of green slime that's coming directly from the storm drain after a rain. Because what happens is the rain pushes through the catch basin containing rotting material that sits there, and it produces algae in the water. The other thing I'd like to point out is that we have two lakes that do not have any storm drains. Their water quality is superior to the ones with storm drains, and we have the water data to prove this. Another concern we have is as the development has progressed north of us, we get more and more stormwater into our drains. We have one lake, a ten-acre lake with nine drains. And also the creek that runs parallel, the Renshaw Ferry Drain runs parallel to our lakes. And the nice thing about this whole water system is that we're all part of the Clinton River watershed, and our lakes drain into this creek when our water level comes up high. Well, if you look at picture 10 and you see how high that creek is, it doesn't allow for our lakes to drain properly. We're all fearful of flooding. The pictures 11 through 13 show pictures of erosion that is occurring over there as people on the creek are losing their property. So that is a major concern. We have also witnessed creek water backflowing into our lake during the times of high rain, and that's not a good thing for water quality as well. And we most certainly appreciate the city asking for stimulus packet money. Am I out of town?
Continue.
And we know that's a long-range project, and that's why we're specifically asking the council to please support the cleaning of the drains one time per year, the problem drains twice a year. And as I finish, I just want you to know that we are doing everything we can. I put in an educational packet of material for the residents. I've talked to Jennifer Lawson, she's provided us with that. We're part of the Clinton River watershed. We're doing everything we can. We don't put all the blame here. We're just asking for some help, and I really wanted you to see what's happened to our property. So thank you for your concern.
Thank you. And I know Mr. Diener, who I'm gonna call on next, has some additional things to say. Okay, thank you. Mr. Diener? David Diener?
We'll call it Deener tonight.
Oh, sorry. I'm sorry.
You people don't have an easy night, do you? My name is Dave Deener, and I'm the president of the Emerald Lakes Homeowners and Village Association.
You wanna move over by the mic?
I can do that.
Yeah, a little bit more.
Is that better?
Yep, thank you.
What I'm asking for this evening doesn't cost anything. I'm asking you to help us with two-way communication between the ELV homeowners board and our city departments. It seems to be very difficult for some city departments to include us in what they have going on relating to the village. At times, they seem to be very wary of even talking to us. The potential exists to change our six lakes into swamps, and you have seen some of that tonight. We also are at risk at times to flood 200 homes. The ELV board answers to 550 homes, about 1,500 residents. The communication between the board and the residents is solid. Jennifer Lawson was invited to one of our homeowners' meetings to give a presentation and was pleasantly surprised to find over 200 people in attendance. Mr. Brian Murphy has been very gracious and has met with members of the ELV board twice this past year. The first meeting was to enlist his aid in solving drain problems involving South Boulevard and John R., and the second meeting was the one we asked for more frequent cleaning of our street drain sumps. The county drain commission people tell me that three of our city departments had met to discuss our drain situation. We received no information about that from the city. I assume the meeting related by the county was a result of Mr. Murphy's involvement. We have no idea what the meeting covered, or other than it was concerning our village. Recently, a crew was noticed taking samples from the street drains. They informed that they're a consulting firm and were hired by the city to take samples over a 10-month period. I can guarantee you that had the residents known that you had done that, they would have applauded you. We generally do not ask the city for help, and we're thrilled when we discover you're providing extra services. We first heard it in a council meeting and read later in the paper that the city had put our street drains on the president's stimulus package list. Residents called to ask exactly what was the city planning to do, and I had to tell them, of course, I had no clue. For it to be on that list, the project needs to be shovel-ready, and until we saw the crew taking samples, we were not aware of any studies concerning our village. Several other residents asked if the city was going to use the stimulus money to fill the lakes in with dirt. Think about that. I thought it was a legitimate question. It's a well-known fact, if you don't keep people informed, they're going to make up something to fit the situation. And usually when they do that, they're wrong. A prime example is that stimulus package. You have a ready-to-go-for-bid project, and we know none of the details, so that question is valid. Our board has a lot of testing history and other pertinent data I would think would be valuable in making decisions. The lake experts we consult with regularly use our data to help in their investigations. The elected board itself is made up, what I think, of what I think is an impressive assortment of talent. We have two educators, retired marine lieutenant colonel, two members with a degree in biology, one of those has a master's and is also taught at Wayne State, and that's Margaret, our lakes rep that you just listened to. We have financial people, administrative assistants, an engineering manager, and a project manager. Our board has a vast knowledge base concerning the lakes and the drains. I cannot believe our city wouldn't want to tap into that storehouse. We have a proven communications pipeline with our residents, and I can't believe you wouldn't want us to keep our 550 homes informed about the nice things that you do for us. And you do do nice things for the city residents, you really do. Thank you. When the engineering department or streets and drains are working on a project or just cleaning a drain, it would really help us if you could keep us informed so that we could pass the word on to our residents. They are interested, and more than that, they're really concerned. But they guess a lot, and so do I. The ELV Homeowners Association has not been sitting back waiting to be rescued. We're out in front, spending a lot of money, time, and effort, including the education of our residents, to correct our lake problems. Again, it's two-way communication that I'm after tonight. I genuinely thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, we appreciate you coming. Next, we have our county commissioner, Gary McElvery, who would like to address us. We appreciate you coming this evening, and...
My pleasure.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, members of council, first of all, I'd like to introduce myself. I'm Gary McElvery. I'm the newest county commissioner that represents the southeastern part of Troy. I look forward to being able to work with all of you on any county issues, all of the elected officials, as well as all of the city folks. Anything I can do to help out and try to move things along on the county level, I'll be more than happy to do. Just a couple things real quick that I'd like to mention. We are trying to try to get a little bit more open government, so what we're doing is we're gonna try to get some evening meetings at the county level. So many people work during the day, they can't come to our meetings, so I'm gonna push for that first. If that doesn't work, at least try to get some kind of a webcast or cable TV avenue where people are a little bit more accessible to that. We're also looking at any new way possible to help out in this economy. There's so many homes that are being foreclosed on, people are employed without health insurance, so we're gonna look at different ways we can help, any little way that may be. Also, Representative Nolenberg mentioned the three-year budget. I was very pleased when County Executive Brooks Patterson announced that he was gonna go to the three-year budget. I was very impressed when we got there and found the two-year budget, because as most of you know, I was a councilman in Madison Heights for many years, and we had a one-year budget, probably like you do. And it helps so much to kind of project out and make sure that we don't get in those tight predicaments with this kind of economy. Also, just make mention real quick, I mentioned your city attorney. I'm very pleased at the way that you handle your liquor violations, being involved with Madison Heights for as many years as I was. We don't do that, and I'm gonna go back and recommend that they start doing that. It makes the store owners answer to somebody. Unfortunately, so many times they don't, and things just happen year and year again, so I'd like to thank you for that process. It does well.
And if there's anything that the city can do to help Madison Heights with getting that set up, we've been doing that for a number of years, and I think it does help.
Yes, it does.
It does help. Mayor Protam Howard, did you have a question for...
Well, I was just gonna thank you for coming, and glad to have you at our meetings anytime, and it sounds like you've got some good goals there. I like the idea of the evening meetings, and I really like the idea of streaming it on the internet if possible too, or at least archiving it. That's great. Anything we can do to help, let us know.
I appreciate that. Thank you so much.
And the county does have their new email system that Brooks Patterson mentioned at his State of the County, where they're sending out things, and I know I get regular, you know, updates and kinds of things, but there are things that citizens can sign up for too, where if they want to know a specific area, that they want to know from the website. Do you want to talk...
Oakgov.com is the county website. You can get just a load of different information, one in particular, foreclosed homes. It's always best that you don't let it get to that stage where you're past due on your payments. The county has people that work as a third-party counselor that will work with your mortgage company to try to come with some resolution so that you don't lose your house. So that's also on the website, but you can find just about anything at all on the website. And don't wait too long. I mean, get in touch with them early, and they'll be more than happy to work with you.
Okay, thank you for coming. Councilman Brumfield, I think, has a question or comment?
Not for this gentleman.
Oh, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our previous speakers, normally we take people as they come, but I didn't want them to leave, feeling that some of the things they shared fell on deaf ears. I appreciate all your efforts and what you're doing here, and I would ask if Mr. Murphy and you, both of you, could get together and maybe work out, it's hard to make sure that all the homeowners associations get the correct information and all that, but this is a big problem, and it sounds like you've already built a relationship with Mr. Murphy, and I'd like to see more of that for the benefit of the city on both ends. I don't know what could be worked out, but the logistics of communication.
Thank you. And we have Marvin Reinhardt, which is to speak, and then did I also see, yes, how are you? Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor. I appreciate talking tonight, talking about your lake project. I'm just waiting for some of you guys' foreclosed homes so I can buy them up, so I can join the, you know, be a little bit closer to the subject, because I understand, you know, how deep those lakes used to be and how they were filled in with stuff to make them as shallow as they are today. I lost two of my friends drowning in the gravel pits, so I understand those pits very well. Also, I'd like to say something. I'm glad you guys get down on these people selling liquors, but you understand, once again, you bust a seven-dollar man at the counter, okay? That's really brave. That's just like our policemen. They're real fast busting the guy and the dog on the porch, but a guy can come into town here, rip off the red roof in, eight cameras between here and the expressway. They can't find them, because they're probably busting everybody for selling liquor by mistake. Because by looking at Lambert's blog once in a while, it looks like it's a crime wave all over this Troy, like there's reams and reams of crime going on. I don't understand where Lambert finds this stuff. I call his number, and it's the police department, so he might have an inside track. Two, I'd like to congratulate this Bill, whatever his name is, I can't really pronounce his name, I'm not good with names, because I butcher them. So his name is C-O-W-G-E-R. He thinks he's gonna get all his murals in the Troy Transit Center that we haven't even built yet. So apparently, he's already retiring on his accomplishments. That's nice to hear. I also tried to get water quality today from your lakes and all the water, and a woman gave me a little piece of paper, the forward form. So I didn't know how to fill it out, so I emailed it to all my senators and asked them, please fill out this form, and they say, what is this? I said, this is the form the city of Troy gives people. Now, I got an IQ like you wouldn't believe, okay? I know, and I can't fill the form out. So Senator Peters down there, he's trying to fill it out, Mark's trying to fill it out, nobody can fill it out, about what question to ask, what the water quality is in this state. But I've asked the Canadian, you know, and then the Michigan National Resources wants to know, because I asked them the question, because the water in this city is a Michigan resource, like the mayor says. Since I live where I live, I complain to the state. I don't come to no city thing, because I was told, because where I live, only the state handles it. And when the police comes into my neighborhood, I call the state police because they're trespassing. Or does that place pay an extra fee to have the police come through that area? That's all, you know, that's part of what I like to know. And I don't know if any of these buildings in Troy were built with these Chinese plywood, drywall. It smells like rotten eggs. I don't know if the city even cares whether or not where the construction of these houses are made. And two Fridays ago, I got a phone call, and it was kind of funny. He said, and I called him a pepper nose, but it might not have been. He said he was Nelson, and I'm spreading all types of rumors about him. I don't have to spread no rumors about a loser, okay? Because I used to live in Idiot City. He called it Elliott, I call it idiot, right next to dumb dock. And I assure you, it's a nice city, but don't tell them you're out of state. I lost a set of tires in one day. Get your plates changed. Get your plates changed quick. I'm just, that's how they are in Baltimore. There's four million people where there's only 80,000 where we are. And I really don't have much to say, because I'm still getting stuff back from these different government agencies about why the City of Troy is turning into pollution city. I'm asking that, where in Troy is not pollution? I got people in Claussen want to sue the City of Troy for air pollution going over their city. I'm financing it. I got lots of money to throw away. I hope you guys do, because I don't think Troy's in trouble. If Troy was in trouble, the council would have 24-hour meetings going on to make sure that we're not in trouble. That's when it swept. Because when I worked for the UAW, and I had to make some minor adjustments to GM management, okay, that was my job, management, ah, I don't know what you call it, but they accused me of throwing them down elevator shafts, downstairs and stuff, but that's just rumors, and nobody can accuse them of rumors. But I'll be back in two weeks, and it's going to get worse, just because I don't think you guys care about Troy. If you cared about Troy, you wouldn't worry about 16 Mile, because 16 Mile is pollution city. Thank you, Mark.
Mr. Savage? Nice to see you. We haven't seen you in a while.
No, I've been around, but not here, I guess.
Good evening.
I suppose, I think, oh, well, good evening, Mayor and all councilors. It's nice to see you all again. So I've been getting my news from newspaper, and this is why it prompted me to come here tonight, because I read a little article here regarding a difference of opinion between Mr. Richardson, the representative for the developer of the pavilions, and Mr. Howarak, the representative of the citizens of Troy. And there's a couple of quotes here that "The truth of the matter is the owner overpaid for the property, and the economy went south." I guess that was Mr. Howarak's comment, and Mr. Richardson's comment response to that was, "From my perspective, it's rumor and not substantiated by the owner, diamond of Troy." But it was interesting to note that Mr. Richardson did not deny the accuracy of Mr. Howarak's remark, and a spokesman for the development, I would think he should know whether that was accurate or not. And, you know, Mr. Richardson, of course, is representative of town investors, and as investors, their interest naturally is making money. And Mr. Howarak, who has been around this city for a long time, his interest is in representing the good of the City of Troy and its residents, and I would think is very well-qualified to speak on residents' behalf. Now, about the pavilions, about two years ago, I was asked what I thought of the Monarch Project, which I'm looking at in a similar light. I thought the concept was good, but it was 10 years too late. And even though I like the idea of a living, working, and shopping, or possibly in the same development, that's good, I'm not so sure that it's good for Troy. But anyway, since then, the city government has spent many hours and no doubt lots of money negotiating PUDs, and I don't remember the names of these developments, was John R. and Big Beaver, where the CPS now stands, and another development on John, and I think it was Square Lake Road, and I think that was the one that I read in the paper was abandoned. And the other, I don't know whether it's abandoned, but it may never be finished. And now, after months of negotiations, the pavilions hinges on the state of Michigan throwing in $20 million. Now, the state government, at the moment, is in bad shape. It's laying off workers, it's freeing prison inmates, and making all sorts of cuts. And now, an out-of-state developer wants bailout money for a shopping center in this, one of the country's most affluent communities, and I don't think that's going to fly. And I don't think it should, because the state that the country is in, there are a lot more important projects than the pavilions. Now, to my mind, the basis of the free enterprise system is supply and demand. If you drive around Troy, it is obvious that the supply of buildings is years ahead of the demand, both residential, commercial, and industrial. In the unlikely event that these PUD projects did get finished, and they did get occupied, and they were successful, their success would be at the expense of existing area businesses that have been operating without taxpayer help. There is no indication that the demand for what these projects supply will increase anytime soon. So we are not dealing with a supply and demand system here. The supply of buildings, I think it's going to take, in my mind, five years minimum to catch up. So it would be easy for everybody to sit back and blame the economy for all their problems, and I hear particularly businesspeople, some of the top ones...
You're almost done. I know. Go ahead.
...about how could we have known this would happen, that the economy would tank? Well, I knew. Years ago, when I heard radio ads saying, "Come and see us, we'll sign you to a mortgage, no money down, bad credit, interest only," I knew it was going south. And yes, you can afford that $500,000 house, even if you only make $40,000 a year. Something was wrong. It didn't make sense. So we all knew that this was going to tank, but nobody tried to stop it. And now, we're going down the same path. So in my mind, it would seem obvious that the Monarch Project is dead, because the people who were going to build the Monarch have pretty much put on hold other projects that they had in Royal Oak. The Pavilion Project, I think, is dead. But when all the dust is settled, will these developers be prepared to reimburse the city for all the wasted time and expense that they put into this? I don't think so. Okay, almost thinks. Now, I know I'm sometimes critical, and maybe even a little cynical, but I also try to be constructive. So I think, let's go to a plan that will work, that is doable, a project that I know there is demand for, and that is, let's go back to Plan A, the Civic Center Park. We've sat through all these discussions, other things that have tanked, and before any of this, before the Monarch, way back, we talked about a civic center, a downtown, for short, one that everybody wanted. I'm still waiting for that skating rink. It's not going to happen at the pavilions. So I think the plan is a good one. I think we can do it, and we should do it. And hopefully, Troy families will enjoy their own outdoor skating park next winter. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Savage. Is there anyone else that I missed? I'm sure they'll be back for it.
I just want to tell you, the kids sitting behind me were very proud to be able to hear the liquor license. They said, "When do they hold this? How often?" And so I said, "Well, just come to the council meeting. You're welcome to." And they said their teacher sent them this time, but they were very interested in the liquor license. And, but I came up here to tell you that we do a lot for the Boys and Girls Club. They have The Taste of Troy, they have River Cuttings, they have jars all over, they do other dinners, lunches, and things like that. But my main goal is that, I'd like to tell everybody and people listening, that Troy People Concerned are having their fourth annual pasta dinner, which is going to be a little different, and they're going to have music with it, and it's on March 28th. And dinner will start at 5:00 PM, and they have a live auction at 6:30, and it's on Big Beaver United Methodist Church, which is 3753 John R. Road, and it's $25. Now, my reason for coming up here and saying this is that the Boys and Girls Club, it's nice, is keep putting things in for the Boys and Girls Club, but if the parents can't pay any of their bills, we won't need a Boys and Girls Club, because they're going to move out of town. They're going to move to a state where they're going to be able to pay their bills, find some kind of job, so we won't need those Boys and Girls Club, unless we help their parents, and that's what the Troy People Concerned do. They help them get out there and pay some of their bills, help them even talk to the city about paying their water bills. They'll help them in that way. And the reason this brought me up is that when my daughter was going door-to-door campaigning with me, one guy came to the door and was crying with her and said, "I can't even meet my electric bill this month." And he says, "I can't do it." She came down to me, and she goes, "Mom, do you have your checkbook with you?" Well, I didn't at the time. I had just my purse, because she was driving. And she says, "Let's go home. I want to write a check to pay this man's bill." Now, I feel like we have more with the Troy People Concerned, but not that many show up. And I don't think it's hurting anybody to say, "Hey, let's try, let's help their parents out for change," instead of just, like The Taste of Troy could be one year for Troy People Concerned, the next year for Boys and Girls Club. We've got to keep their homes, so that these kids have a home besides just a play area. This is what I came up here for. And if anybody would like tickets, I'm sure they can flood Councilman Harlowick's email address or phone number like crazy. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Then we'll continue on with our regular business, and as per our rules and procedure, if someone requests an item under regular business, we take that before the others. And so we had E8 requested by Donald Schenk, retired Brigadier General Schenk, who has asked to have this item brought forward, so... Don, nice to see you.
You called me by surprise. I wasn't expecting you quite that soon. Mayor Shilling, members of the City Council, I just wanted to step up today and ask that you accept Mr. Nelson's resignation with regret. I came to the City of Troy in 1994 circuitously, as some of you know, but I originated in the state of Maryland. Lived in rural Maryland when Columbia came up out of the farmland of Howard County. I know where Elegance City is, and I know where Baltimore is. I was born and raised in Baltimore. I'm very, very familiar with the concepts of management by objectives, the concept of budgeting for outcomes, and very, very positive things that can accrue to large organizations by following some of these sound precepts. I congratulate Mr. Nelson for bringing those ideas to the city. He has had a very, very tough job as our chief operating officer for the last year-plus. I know I'm going to miss his steady hand at the tiller if you decide to accept his resignation. I also know that our great loss will be the Free States Great Day. Phil, good luck to you in whatever you decide to do. Thank you.
Thank you. We have a resolution before us.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, Councilwoman Kirwin.
Resolved that Troy City Council hereby accepts the resignation of City Manager Philip L. Nelson with regret, effective March 31, 2009.
Moved by Councilwoman Kirwin, seconded by Councilwoman Beltermini, that Troy City Council accepts the resignation of City Manager Philip L. Nelson with regret, effective March 31, 2009. Discussion?
Mayor.
Madam Mayor Protem Howarak.
I just wanted to personally thank Phil Nelson for your service to the city, and also for your willingness to stay an extra month to assist us with the transition. Thank you.
Anyone else? I have appreciated the time that Phil Nelson has been with us here and the qualities that he brought to the position. I know when we searched for someone to come here, we had high standards for the citizens, the community, and for the city manager and all the staff. And we do wish Phil well in Maryland, and I appreciated Don coming this evening to speak, and also for his kind things that he said about Mr. Nelson, and also about the kind things he said about Maryland. And is there anyone else that wishes to make a comment at this time?
Madam Mayor.
Councilwoman Kirwin.
I too appreciate. I've learned so much from Manager Nelson's white papers, particularly about sustainability. He is known nationally. It would be no surprise that he would be actively recruited by other communities, knowing his full training, and it will be difficult to replace him.
Mrs. Bartholomew, could we have the vote then on the item?
Councilwoman Beltermini?
Yes.
Brumfield?
Yes.
Eisenbacher?
Yes.
Kirwin?
Yes.
Mayor Shawlon?
Yes.
Then we'll return back to the beginning of the E item, and under appointments, the first one is a Merrill appointment, and this one, we're going to vote tonight, and then he'll get right to work tomorrow, because tomorrow the Board of Review starts meeting. And that is to bring to appoint Forrest Petipenko to the Board of Review for the term expiring January 31, 2012.
Support?
Moved by the Chair, seconded by Mayor Protem Howarak, that we make that appointment. The vote, Mrs. Bartholomew?
Councilwoman Brumfield?
Yes.
Eisenbacher?
Yes.
Lenny?
Yes.
Howarak?
Yes.
Kirwin? Yes.
Mayor Shawlon?
Yes.
Councilwoman Bellamy?
Yes.
Motion passes, and City Council appointments?
Mayor.
Madam Mayor Protem Howarak.
Thank you. I'll move forward the resolutions as printed, and that would be David Eisenbacher as the City Council Representative to the Employees Retirement System Board of Trustees, and the Retiree Healthcare Benefits Plan and Trust, as well as Andrew Keltzounas to the Liquor Advisory Committee. Support?
I tend to vote for both of them.
Yes.
May I move to separate?
Do we have a... Do we need a second on the separation? Yes. Moved by Councilwoman Kirwin, seconded by Councilwoman Beltermini, that we separate on this item for the City Council appointments. Mrs. Barth... Any comments? Mrs. Bartholomew, the vote?
Councilwoman Eisenbacher?
Yes.
Lenny?
Yes.
Howarak?
Yes.
Kirwin? Yes.
Mayor Shawlon?
Yes.
Brumfield? Yes.
Motion passes, and the second one?
On the Employee Retirement System, I gladly support David's position on here. I see that it's an unexpired term. I know that at the previous meeting, or two meetings ago, Mayor Protem Eisenbacher placed David's name in a nomination, and I do support it. I do see that the term, the unexpired term finishes in April 15th, and I ask my colleagues' consideration to perhaps let me fill the rest of that when April comes around, give you some time to think. If you'll recall, in 2007, when we had the organizational meeting, everyone was appointed to a committee or perhaps a board, except for one, and it's been over a year now. So perhaps when April rolls around, it would be nice to be considered for this one. I have time during the day.
Okay. Thank you. Do we need, we need another vote, Mrs. Bartholomew, correct?
Actually, you can go need two more, one on the employee retirement, and one on the other.
Correct.
Ready?
The vote, yes.
Councilwoman Bellany?
Yes.
Howarak?
Yes.
Kirwin? Yes.
Mayor Shawlon?
Yes.
Councilwoman Bellamy? Yes.
Brumfield?
Yes.
Eisenbacher?
Yes.
Motion passes, and Mrs. Bartholomew, one more?
Councilwoman Howarak?
Yes.
Kirwin?
Set forth by the FCC Public Notice DA 09-203.
Support.
Moved by Councilwoman Belltrini, seconded by Councilwoman Kerwin that we approve the resolution as printed in red. Discussion? I think this is a step in the right direction and hopefully it will get some response favorable to the communities. Mrs. Bartholomew, the vote?
Yes.
Isenbacher?
Yes.
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 Motion passes. E5 is the possible tree ordinance revisions. Councilwoman Kerwin?
Resolved that Troy City Council hereby direct staff to draft revisions to Chapter 28 tree ordinance. I don't have any recommendations.
Are you going to read the second part in case anyone has any recommendation?
If anyone does, and be it further resolved that Troy City Council hereby recommends the following revisions.
Moved by Councilwoman Kerwin, do we have a second and then we'll, do we leave the revisions in there and then the second? I'm confused and...
We need the revision.
If there are any, I don't know if people are going to suggest things this evening or wait, let it come back to us through the regular channels.
Madam Mayor.
Councilwoman Belltrini?
It seems to me that staff gave us their best guess on what appropriate changes would be two years ago, and we rejected that pretty much out of hand. So, my interpretation of this is if we want some kind of changes, be they what kind of trees, what kind of enforcement, what kind of permit, we need to articulate at least some of those so that they know what direction to pursue.
Madam Mayor.
Councilwoman Kerwin?
I don't have a copy of what was rejected two years ago. I have a copy of what's included in here.
That's the current tree ordinance, so that's the one that has to be worked on.
That wasn't the one that was offered before, so, before this council, the revisions. That's what I don't have privy to. So, I understand that some time ago, that was directed out of hand. However, time has passed, and I'm not aware. I've never seen a copy of that.
Perhaps instead...
A suggestion would be to find out what best practices are, and I don't, haven't seen them, what best practices are in surrounding communities, and bring back a sample ordinance to reflect. So, something to look at. But I don't even have the one from two years ago, or longer.
Could I suggest then that this item come back to us when we have that information with us, so that we could make some possible suggestions? I know that without delineating all of the items that were there, there were some items that were included in the suggestion that council felt went a little bit farther than they wanted to go with the tree ordinance, but I think everyone was pretty much in agreement that we need to do some protection of areas and that we do need a tree ordinance, but it just seemed that that wasn't there. So, instead of having this on the table tonight, if we could have that when we have some more information to go with it, would be more appropriate. What do you think, the rest of you? Councilwoman Isenbacher?
I did go back and find a copy of the, I think it was June 2006 agenda, and get the revisions. And when I was reading through them, the thing that struck me is in terms of the reach of the, the reach of the proposed regulations, is that it assumed a lot of city control of private property. And the one thing that I would like to see in any proposal we discuss as a council, is a acknowledgement that trees are a renewable resource, and that they are the property, the property of the person who owns the property. In a lot of places in here, it talks about public, let me get to the section.
Tan.
In public spaces, in public spaces not just being public property, public spaces are areas that are accessible by the public. So, the city would take control of a lot of the private property within the city that is deemed a public space. And I know that a lot of homeowners associations don't want to have to apply to be able to prune their trees or maintain their trees within the city. And I think we need to have, it's great if we revise it to include the ordinances and the updates relative to the public property. I believe we overstepped in the language relative to public property, private property, which happens to be a public space.
Okay. Well, instead delineating all of those tonight, if we could do what Councilwoman Kerwin is suggesting, that we have that, so that we all have that data in front of us, and then we can all go through, make suggestions, get those back to staff, so that then when something comes forward to the table for a vote, we've already incorporated some of the comments perhaps that council members have. So, there's been a resolution moved, but no one's seconded. So, if, with those comments, if we just not have a motion on the table this evening for this. Okay. E6 is the cost sharing agreement with the Troy Birmingham Intermodal Transit Facility Professional Engineering and Design Services. E6. Pardon?
Would you like someone to move the resolution?
Yes, yes.
Resolved that the Troy City Council hereby approves the interlocal agreement between the City of Troy and the City of Birmingham, which equally divides the cost of the professional engineering and design services for the Troy Birmingham Intermodal Transit Facility. And be it further resolved that the Troy City Council hereby authorizes the mayor and city clerk to execute the interlocal service agreement on behalf of the City of Troy, a copy of which shall be attached to the original minutes of this meeting.
Do we have a second?
Support.
Moved by Councilwoman Belltrini, seconded by Councilwoman Kerwin that we approve the resolution as printed in red. Discussion?
Mayor.
Mayor Potem Howarla?
Yeah. Question, and then I'll get on to how I feel about this. But my first question would be, have we, have we done anything with Grand Sacra about extending the timeframe on there, so waiving the deadline?
Mr. Murphy?
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. We did approach Grand Sacra about the idea of extending the deadline. At the time that we approached them, their financial team effectively said that right now it's premature to, to agree to an extension in time. And as well, in the agreement, there is a provision that we could purchase the land from them for $1.5 million. So, it's really not in their better interest right now to have any discussions with us in that front.
And the other thing, Mayor, is, you know, I, my position with respect to this project is the same, and I don't think it's a wise use of money, especially when funds are short. I don't, I don't want to reiterate what I've said in the past. If anybody has any questions about my position, they can certainly contact me individually, but I don't want to rehash something that's already been discussed here on a couple of occasions.
Further discussion on the motion?
Mayor.
Councilwoman Isenbacher, and then Councilwoman Brumfield?
My concern is, is that we don't have the match funding committed that I've seen from this, I haven't seen a commitment from the state in our minutes. I haven't seen a commitment from the state or federal at this point.
Mr. Murphy, you want to respond to that?
I've seen the applications.
Sure. Thank you again, Mayor, and members of council. The state of Michigan did provide a grant of $350,000 for us to do the first set of plans to get to the 30 percent phase. Now, what we need to do is take it from 30 percent to completion, so that we can make the project indeed shovel-ready if we are to seek any federal stimulus funds. Likewise, for us to be able to move forward with the project, we have to have these designs completed. Typically, these design costs are going to be borne by us, and then we will seek federal and state funds for the actual construction costs.
Okay. Any of the users of the facility, the service providers, taxi, car rental, et cetera, have any of those been identified?
There, there have been some discussions regarding the possibility of equity into the facility, but more than likely, it's not going to be an equity position. It's going to be a lessy, a tenant situation. Exactly right.
Do we have the firms that are interested identified?
There are a number of different firms that have been identified. They want to see exactly what the plan is going to look like. There is a car rental company that is interested. There are two black sedan companies that still express interest in having a space available at this location. There are some other options that we are exploring as well, and one that you brought up, which was the fractional car rental ownership groups. That's still something that we're actively exploring too.
Okay.
You through? Councilwoman Brumfield?
Thank you. Mr. Murphy, so, it's some of the questions that Councilman Isenbacher asked were mine. So, I, what I understand here is, because when I first read that, I thought it was awfully premature that we were going ahead with plans when we're still trying to raise funds. But I understand the concept that as we move ahead, it allows for grants or more monies to come in, and if we stay and don't move ahead, then not monies would not even be available. Is that correct?
That's a good way to put it.
Okay. Based on that, just a hypothetical question for you. So, we move ahead with all of this at a, right now, 421,000 for these plans, and our fellow keeps lobbying Congress and Lansing, and what happens when we don't get all the money we need to build this? And we've already invested all this money in it.
Mr. Murphy?
I feel very confident that the project has a very good legislative support in Washington DC and in Lansing, and we have a good team together with Clark Hill and with Hubble, Roth &amp; Clark. And actually, I do want to say thank you to Hubble, Roth &amp; Clark for helping us advance our relationship with CN further than we've had it before. So, we have a very good team of people working on this, and they all are pointing in the right direction to solve this issue. I know that doesn't answer the question about the big what-if, and that I can't answer for you. That is a risk that you do have, there's no doubt about it, but I feel very comfortable that it's a very small risk, and that you have to spend this money if you want to get that money. So, you know, it's a risk that you have to take in order to get the request for funds.
I have spoken in favor of us moving ahead with the transit facility a number of times, and one of the things I'm hearing from people out in the community and people who are experts at looking at why we need such a facility, and one of the things is that a lot of the folks that come to Troy to work here in Troy, in our shopping areas, in our restaurants, in various areas of the city, do not live in Troy. They live in other communities, and they come here. And this would afford them another way to come to Troy. Also, we have the ability for people that live within Troy to travel in other means, other than with a car. And one of the things we looked at, again, you know, when we did the future study, was looking at other means of transportation, other than just vehicle transportation. And I also think that because we are working with another community, and because even though it is a Troy Birmingham project, it really is a regional type of thing that would happen here, that the chances of are greater in getting monies for something like that, rather than if it was standalone just for Troy and only benefiting Troy, that the gains are much broader than that. And so, those are the things that I've heard, which makes me feel like we are moving in the right direction. I wish we had assurances that we were getting the money, you know, right now, but of course, every community does.
Mayor?
Mayor Potem Howarla?
Yeah, just, just one thing, and maybe I'm missing something, but you mentioned that this would provide an additional way for people to get to Troy, and I'm curious as to what it is. I might be misunderstanding your comments or the intention of this facility.
Well, the ease in which to come to the community, I should say, because I, yes, the train still does run on those tracks there, but people have to take sort of a different route to, to get there. Also, there is a combination of joining together and probably an extension of the services that are already provided within Troy, but more of an organizational effort with them. You're speaking of, I'm speaking of bus, cabs, other joint ventures of transportation that would occur. And I know what you're, you're getting at is that those are already offered within Troy, but they aren't centrally located.
Mayor?
Mayor Potem Howarla?
Yeah, unless we're going to build low-income housing there, people still are going to have to get there. And low-income housing is the only way you can afford to live in a home and, and work at any of the retail establishments that are replacing our high-paid, white-collar and engineering jobs that are being driven out of the city by the economy primarily. My concern more so relates to the fact of allocation of resources. We do have a lot of really important needs that I think are much higher on the scale of importance, foremost of which is maintaining our roads. And we must not neglect the fact that when we build this facility, it's going to have a maintenance cost, and it's going to eventually need to be replaced. You know, anytime we build a new facility, in order to keep the facility running, it has an additional cost, which today we don't have. So, I just point that out to you. And, you know, our resources are dwindling. Unfortunately, property values continue to decline. If the economy were doing much better, I would say that our room for error is much greater. Today, it's not, and next year, it's going to be even tighter. So, I don't think, I think this is a very dangerous project to be spending money on. And, you know, again, if the, if you get stimulus money for it, again, it has to be maintained. It has to eventually be replaced. But I guess I kind of got sockered into arguing my position again. I apologize for doing what I said I wasn't going to do. Anyway.
Councilman Isenbacher?
I do want to try and keep this on the subject matter in front of us, not whether or not we need the project, because you've had that vote several times in the past.
Right.
My concern is, is this is a very big step in the process, and my feelings are is that we're not ready for this step yet, primarily because at this step, we're putting pen to the paper. I haven't seen a, a list of design criteria, what you're looking for in terms of your accommodating, car rental, the rideshare, bicycle storage, rollerblade storage, or personal transportation storage, taxis, or black cabs, you said, the train facilities, and what percentage of the facility, what design criteria we're going to have in terms of the maintenance, which was, was brought up. I know we've, we've talked privately, and I brought it up at one of our meetings, that it's very important that it not have an ongoing maintenance cost from the city. And to move forward, we're writing a blank check at this point, because we don't have a lot of those things ironed down and agreed between our communities, Birmingham and Troy, and the other parties that are going to be participating in this.
Mr. Murphy?
To a certain extent, a lot of those questions have been answered as we've gotten to the 30 percent phase, but we still do have a lot of work to get through between the 30 percent phase and getting to completion. So, some of those details, you're right, still remain to be somewhat ironed out. However, I will tell you that the largest cost behind this is building the tunnel, and that singularly alone is driving the largest amount to, to doing this project. That, that price tag is most of that money. We know exactly what's going to be involved in, in doing that. The, this is, the design for the building, you're really looking at a building that's only about 1,500 square feet to begin with, maybe 2,000 square feet. It has the potential to be expanded, but as we mentioned before, we did not want to build a Phoenix Center. The Phoenix Center failed because it was too big, and it didn't give you that comfort level. We always talked that this project was going to be designed on a smaller scale with, with the availability to expand it as it showed need to be expanded. The, the large question really is just finding that tenant for, for, for the space, so that we can keep those operating costs covered completely. And that's a goal that you've set for us, and it's a goal that we're looking to try to meet.
One of the, if I may continue, Mayor.
Yes, go ahead.
One of the points that Councilwoman Kerwin brought up was the request for progress reports at the last meeting.
Yes.
I thought that was a very good report, request, because obviously, I'm learning stuff as you're speaking. What is the status of getting a progress report?
The next council meeting, I, we miswrote in the memo. It said March 2, Clark Hill would be here. It's actually March 23. Clark Hill will be at our next city council meeting. They will be the very first presentation on your agenda, because after they're done here, they'll also be going over the City of Birmingham and providing an update as well, as to where we are at that point. Now, something else I do want to point out to you is that tonight, what you're approving is just the cost sharing agreement between Troy and Birmingham.
Right.
Without this cost sharing agreement, the City of Troy is 100% on the hook for doing any of the local design work cost as well. Keep that in mind.
Will this come back to us when we appoint a firm?
Well, we have an open contract with Hubble, Roth &amp; Clark. That's why that is also included in the package for your, for your review.
Right.
Okay. Is there any update on the ownership of the property on the other side of the tracks?
Clark Hill can bring that up to date for you. I can tell you, though, that we have had conversation with ITC, who actually has the right-of-way that's next to the CN right-of-way, and it looks as though we can accomplish most of the tunneling work within that, those two rights-of-way. So, we can get the platform in place, but then there is the question of the interconnectedness to the City of Birmingham, and Birmingham has had some regular conversations, and I know we can have an update at the March 23 meeting.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, I appreciate the fact, Mr. Murphy, that you're saying that this is just the cost sharing agreement with Birmingham that is on tonight, that we have other items that will come to council to vote on. So, this is not the, you know, the final end of this. Councilwoman Kerwin?
Just a couple of things. In response to the request for additional information, I appreciate that Clark Hill will come on March 23. I would just suggest that it not necessarily always be in a formal presentation. It could always include a report in our, that kind of background information is really very helpful. I don't know that we can get into the detail that Councilmember Isenbacher sees. I understand the purpose of this. I appreciate the discussion at the table tonight. It really has been good. I do, especially Councilmember Brumfield, who really laid it out so succinctly. So, this is what this does. This actually does prepare us to receive those matching funds. Without this, we really are nowhere. So, with that, I will be supporting it. In truth, we've had a great deal of discussion about the concept of it. Some of us agree, some of us don't, but to that end, I would support this.
Further discussion of this cost sharing agreement with Birmingham? The vote, Mrs. Bartholomew?
Councilwoman Isenbacher?
Yes.
Fleming?
Yes.
Howarla?
No.
Kerwin?
Yes.
Yes.
Councilwoman Brumfield?
Yes.
Brumfield?
Yes.
Motion passes. The next item is the confirmation of the interim appointment of Deputy Police Chief Gary Mayer as Acting Police Chief. I'd like to move the resolution. Do I have support?
Support.
I get to do a few things.
Support.
Moved by the chair, seconded by Councilwoman Fleming, that we approve the confirmation of the appointment of Deputy Chief Gary Mayer as Acting Police Chief of the City of Troy as requested by the city manager. Discussion? The vote, Mrs. Bartholomew?
Councilwoman Fleming?
Yes.
Howarla?
Oh, yes.
Kerwin?
Certainly.
Yes.
Councilwoman Brumfield?
Yes, ma'am.
Brumfield?
Yes.
Isenbacher? Yes.
Motion passes. Congratulations. Next, we have our consent agenda, and let me look to see who has requested anything. Ah, of 17 items, I see none, but council members may have some. So, could, do we have any, do we need a resolution? Do we have any that wish to be exempted?
Nope, no questions to answer.
Madam Mayor.
Thank you for sending them ahead like that, Councilwoman Isenbacher. That's very helpful. Yes, Councilwoman Kerwin?
Resolved that all items as presented on the consent agenda are hereby approved as presented, with the exception of...
Madam Mayor, any?
Support.
Move by Councilwoman Isenbacher, seconded, move by Councilwoman Kerwin, seconded by Councilwoman Isenbacher, I'll get it right, that we approve the consent agenda as presented. Discussion? The vote, Mrs. Bartholomew?
Councilwoman Howarla?
Yes.
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 Brumfield?
Yes.
I'm sorry.
Yes.
Yes.
Motion passes. Next time, I'm looking at the next part of the agenda. Next agenda on the 23rd, we have two zoning ordinance text amendment items that will come forward. We'll have the, the other seven, the liquor hearings that'll come forward. I just remind folks of those, council referrals, there weren't any council comments.
Madam Mayor.
Councilwoman Belltrini?
I've been busy. I, I have been to three different SEMCOG meetings about the stimulus package and other things, and the money will roll out, and it has to be appropriated by the end of March. So, just so you all kind of have a timeline in your head. That's what the governor and Kurt Stittle from MDOT have said. That comes with the, and there, there are some arguments over that, and I'll be moderating a discussion on that tomorrow. For you all, the Oakland County Member Outreach Meeting is April 8 at the Hampton Inn and Commerce Township. For working folks, I picked up new brochures at SEMCOG on the My Rideshare. For those of us who have to travel from Troy to downtown Detroit or in reverse, to share with just one other person will save you approximately $3,000 a year. And times are tough. That's significant money. The Clerk's Office has more of these brochures in their official place. You can sign up. There are over 4,000 people. The doctor calls. You have a guaranteed ride home. It's not like the olden days, what am I going to do without my car? What am I going to do if the bus doesn't run there? So, I once again encourage people to use that. It's one of the cost-saving measures we all can do. Michigan Municipal League will meet tomorrow and the next day, and we'll have a report on that. The other thing I have noticed lately is that the nation as a whole is having less and less interest in the auto industry, and maybe we did some of that to ourselves. But in this latest issue of Detroit's business, D-business, there is a compilation of jobs that are influenced by the auto industry in direct and indirect employment, and it's over 16 million, just like that. So...
Over 16 million jobs? Yes, that, I think that's very significant.
So, it's, it's something to think about when you talk about a major industry. And it's even more significant as a percentage of jobs here in southeast Michigan. I said on, for what it's worth, I think I'm done.
Okay. Any other items? Councilwoman Kerwin?
Madam Mayor, I do appreciate the work that Councilmember Belltrini has, has done on transit under her leadership as president of MML, the committee work, and also through SEMCOG. So, I think that it's, it's interesting, because she brings a perspective nationally, regionally, and locally to that issue, and I'm happy to see that she'll address that tomorrow. I have the opportunity to moderate a session tomorrow at MML, and that's on movie magic, movies in Michigan. And I know when you read through our drive, all the way to the end, you saw that... And I know when you read through our drive all the way to the end, you saw that we here in Troy have the opportunity that the historical museum is looking into seeing how to make movie magic right there. And so, I was excited to read that in this, uh, meeting material because it, it really would be a great, what a showcase we have right here and how that would boom for some of our small businesses as well. So, that's exciting and we'll come back, both of us will come back with reports after the conference. Thank you.
Okay. Any others, Councilwoman Eisenbacher?
Relative to the presentation we received earlier this evening from the Emerald Lakes Homeowners Association, and I should also disclose that the homeowners association I'm part of also has a inline retention lake pond, whatever you, detention basin, whatever you'd like to call it. I think as a body, we need to work on a policy or better if staff recommends a policy to us relative to dealing with private properties and the wetlands issues and its interconnection with the Phase Two stormwater requirements. Because a lot of the ponds I've seen in town exhibit the exact same problems that were presented to us this evening by Emerald Lakes. And instead of just having a solution for that one community, something more, more general in how we're going to interface with the private owners of these bodies of water. I mean, city has control over all the dry, all the dry bodies.
We, we can look into that.
Okay. Thank you.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, Councilwoman Kerwin?
On a true municipal concern though, particularly in looking at that, and I really only received it here at the table, is the drains. I'm very concerned about some of the pictures of the drains and you could follow that up now or do it later in, in a report, but the pictures of the drains and how they appear to be closed, that's something that's a grave concern.
Sure. I'd be happy to tell you a little bit right now. And, and that is that I did meet with the two people that came up and spoke with you earlier and we agreed on a plan and that plan at the time and still stands true is that we need to figure out where the stuff is coming from. When, when we had the initial meeting, there was some discussion that perhaps it is a, a single catch basin up on South Boulevard that could be the, the offending location. We're not so sure that that's necessarily the case. We did a, a drive through the neighborhood and found actually that a number of the neighbors had recently had their properties fertilized by a private company and the private company wasn't, well, very judicious in how they applied the fertilizer. A lot of it fell on the sidewalk and the driveways and they acknowledged that that's a neighborhood problem that they need to correct. As well, it came to our attention after the fact from one of our volunteer firefighters that some of the homeowners in that area are watering their lawns by pulling water from the ferry drain, which could very well as well with their backyard drains then that lead into the drain that ultimately ends up back into the pond, could very well be causing some of the problems as well. So, we agreed that what we would do is have a firm go out and do some water sampling and testing and that's exactly what Mr. Deener had pointed out was going on. We're still in the process of collecting that information and so there really, there isn't anything for us to report back to Mr. Deener on what we found because we're still waiting to find out what it is we're finding out. As to the question of why there was information or a proposal put forward for Emerald Lakes, we have a pretty good idea that there are a number of different possible solutions that could very well benefit the, the value of those lakes. And, and that was why we put together what we did for the stimulus funds. At the time we put that forward, there were still questions as to what did shovel-ready mean? What, what pocket of money would we be going for? There were still a lot of whatevs and so really there wasn't any true value in communicating because we didn't know what, what we were shooting for at that point. I can tell you at this point that the, the idea of getting stimulus funds for that project are very slim. There are a number of different possibilities that we also did discuss with the homeowners and it's still yet a little premature and going forward with that. But we do value two-way communication. We do value the idea of making sure that our residents know what's going on. I didn't particularly care for the way that Mr. Deener characterized our conversation and, and I apologize for not speaking up at the time, but at the same time, my Irish had better of me at that moment because, well, we'll just leave it at that.
Thank you.
We have a study item and then we have a closed session and we need to vote on the closed session now and then go to the study item. Is that correct, Mrs. Bartholomew?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so could, could we have a motion for the closed session that has to do with a legal matter?
Madam Mayor.
Councilwoman Beltremini?
We resolve that the Troy City Council shall meet in closed session as permitted by MCL 15.268E Rome Love v. City of Troy.
Support.
Moved by Councilwoman Beltremini, seconded by Councilwoman Fleming, that we approve the resolution as printed in red discussion.
Mayor?
Councilwoman Brumfield?
I'd like to discuss the possibility of amending the closed session to include the evaluation of our city manager as well this evening. And, and I'll tell you why I'm doing that. We have on the table that he's requested a March performance evaluation in closed session. I appreciate that, like a exit, exit evaluation. The reason that I know we still have a study session, I understand that. It's 10:30, it's not terribly late. I'm putting it out because we're all here. There's seven of us here. And I would like to meet with our city manager for this evaluation with all seven of us present. I don't know what's going to happen next time we, we get together. I mean, I could be sick. I mean, who knows? That's, it's not, you know how I feel about long drawn-out meetings. However, I really would like the seven of us to be in that meeting. So, you know what? I'll throw out an amendment to include it and see if I get a second.
Mrs. Blume, do we need the, the number?
Yes, Mayor. If, if that is the will of council, you should add another item under subsection A, which is, which does allow you to meet in a closed session for personnel evaluation when it's requested.
Right. Okay. Do you want to do an amendment?
Yes.
Councilwoman Brumfield?
Yes, to add under subsection A, another item for our closed session, which would be the March performance evaluation of our city manager.
Do we have a second?
Support.
Moved by Councilwoman Brumfield, seconded by Councilwoman Eisenbacher, that we add item under MCL, item A, to the closed session.
Move to separate?
Discussion?
Separate?
It's an amendment.
Oh, it's an amendment. Oh, pardon me.
Yes.
Fairer.
Discussion?
Madam Mayor.
Yes, Councilwoman Beltremini?
I agree with Councilwoman Brumfield that we're all here. And I, I don't want to give the city manager's request short shrift, but I really think our time is better spent talking about the study session item than rehashing. And yet, the case can also be made that maybe that would add knowledge for the study session. So, I, I'm really very torn because we, if we do both of these things in addition to the case, we will be here until after midnight. And I think it's important that everyone understand that you're committing to be here till tomorrow. So, that's kind of where I am.
Further discussion?
Madam Mayor.
Councilwoman Kerwin?
I really think we, we need to focus on tomorrow and that's, that's really the purpose of K is to look to the future. And, and that's where I would like to spend my time.
Further discussion in the motion? Councilwoman Fleming?
I agree. We should try to get this done tonight. We've put it off a couple of times already and we're all, are here. We wait, we want to all be here potentially. So, I'd like to see this all get done tonight.
I have thought about it both ways. I think that being that I sent out some material to all the council members ahead and hopefully everybody had a chance to look at the information, the profile that we did before and get some thoughts going, that we could have a good discussion with K, do the, I don't, my anticipation is that the legal matter is not going to take a long discussion. And then we'll, we'll start the other and if we find that we just aren't getting where we should be, we could always decide to extend. But I would be willing to meet tonight, so.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Mrs. Bartholomew, the vote then?
Councilwoman Kerwin?
No.
Ms. Belfour?
Yes.
Ms. Belfour?
Yes.
Ms. Brumfield?
Yes.
Eisenbacher?
Yes.
Lenny? Yes. Harlan? Yes. Harlan? Yes.
Motion passes. There no other?
Give us the name.
I, yes.
Name motion.
Name motion now?
Ms. Belfour?
Yes.
Ms. Belfour?
Yes.
Brumfield? Yes.
Eisenbacher? Yes.
Lenny? Yes. Harlan? Yes.
Yes.
Motion passes. We will recess, go to the study item in the other room and then after we do the study item, then we'll go to the closed session, so. Our study item.
Available.
And. It is to discuss the interim appointment of an acting city manager and the recruitment process for city manager. And I asked Human Resources Director, Peggy Clifton, to send to all of you ahead the profile for the position of city manager that we used before, because I wanted you all to be reminded of what, you know, things, of the two people who weren't here, we did it, and to see that. And to get us thinking about what we wanted to do at this point. I have my own ideas, but I don't know if we should start with mine or the other people, so. Maybe I should just jump in.
Go.
Change it around, okay, all right. First of all, I have strong feelings that we have two assistant city managers who have very strong qualifications for this position, and that they both want it. Secondly, I know that if one gets it and the other one doesn't, that they'll still work well together. Thirdly, when we did this before and did a national search, that was the mode that we were in then. But I still think we can use this information to judge the people, and I think that we should go in-house, promote in-house this time, within the ranks, and that it would serve us well for many reasons. We've had some good hearty discussions about many issues evolved around the budget and employees this year, and they've been in on all of it. The second thing is, when we did our search before, it cost us $30,000. And we just cut out some things that cost us $30,000. So I'm not sure that expending that kind of money again would get us anybody better. Now, those are my thoughts. You folks can say whatever you want. I don't know whether you agree or disagree, but I've given that quite a bit of thought.
May.
Councilwoman Eisenberg?
In reading through this document, the first thing that occurred to me is that we definitely need a one-page summary.
[laughing].
And all the updates from your State of the City speech need to be added to it also.
Oh, yeah.
If we want to put this out there, it's a book. This is, if you're interested in our one-page summary, we would want to then have you read this exhaustive information. I think we should hire a search professional to, and basically give competition. I mean, it's important, everyone here knows that we're in, it's not easy times. And I think we need to look at who's available outside and inside, and make sure we're getting the absolute best person possible for the future of our city. I think we should put out an RFQ for, for a search, lack of a better term, a headhunter firm. And in terms of cost, obviously, we know who the people are that work for us, we're very familiar with them. If we can get, my experience in the private sector is the headhunter will work on contingency basis, where if they bring in the person, they get a percentage of the pay. If they are not successful, they don't get paid.
I'm not familiar with that.
It's in the professional.
I've never heard that.
If it's not available, then it's not available. But I think we should look and see what options we have for a professional recruiter.
David, I've seen it both ways, where you pay a fee. I've also seen it on a contingency basis, you know, if you pay if they find someone. I agree with the mayor that we've got two good candidates internally, and we should be, they should be considered as we're evaluating. I agree with you, we should look outside as well. But at the same time, we'll, and I agree, we need a professional from the outside. Do you, I know that we don't have time to go, do you have any suggestions of a firm, or do you want to go out with any requests for?
I think I'd like you to enter hopefully at the meeting of the 30th, and keep evaluating until the end of this time. It's four weeks.
Peggy, do you want me to call on you at this point, or, I see you signaling over here.
But this is an important factor to consider. When.
You want to come up and sit by Laurie?
When we hired the Mercer Group a few years ago, they took a full 120 days to do their search. And an RFQ is going to take at least 45 days, I would say.
How about abbreviated RFQ, we call the people that we are aware of?
Councilwoman Bellamy?
What we did last time, Peggy, I think, was we contacted four or five firms that we knew were appropriate in the field, that that's kind of what they did. And then they kind of told us what their services would entail and what it would cost, right?
Mm-hmm.
And that took, yeah, that took almost the full 30 days that we had from the notice till when he was gone.
And it's also based on their availability schedule, too. Not just our schedule, but theirs, and they did an expedited one for us, remember? I'd like to hear from the rest of you. I mean, I know you all have opinions about it.
Mayor? Last time, last time, did we, we didn't just settle on the Mercer Group, we did, did we interview several, or did we just, I, my memory is, I'm hearing that we contacted several, but was it just the Mercer Group we interviewed?
I think it was, because they were available and they met all the criteria that we had set forward.
The only information I have is just the solicitation of a proposal from the Mercer Group.
Okay.
We had, I, I may still have the documentation.
Pardon?
I may still have the documentation, because we had MML, and the Mercer, and the firm that found John the job in Sunny Isles, and then there was another one.
All right.
There were four altogether.
And.
So, and, and it was my understanding that between John and Peggy, they made those contacts and said, in general, this is what we're looking for. And I think, in the interim, we kind of set out what we thought we could afford, and what sort of a program we wanted, and looked and saw where the two came together.
Mm-hmm.
And the Mercer Group did and could do it on our timetable, as I recall.
Right. Yeah, and I realize that I'm duplicating this, that there have been some changes over the years, I, and that kind of stuff, too.
State of the City.
But just so that you could see what was there, and also to see the description of, you know, the things that are expected, the things that are in the charter that are, that are required here. And I brought my charter with us, too, in case there was something we had to go to. I know it's online now, too, but.
I have a question for a city attorney. I remember last time we were really pushing it up against the deadline, and I vaguely remember you saying that the deadline can be extended under certain circumstances, or, I mean, help me out here.
The, according to the charter, the position has to be filled within 120 days, so it's 120 days from March 31st, or April 1st.
Okay, and there's no getting around that?
It's a requirement of the charter.
What I remember here, or is a discussion about that? You know, getting right up to the deadline?
It's a charter requirement, that it has, it has to be filled, there, you know.
Yeah, well, maybe I misunderstood that. Okay.
I would be in favor of looking at some groups like we've done before, and both within and without. I think that, I really think whoever is our next manager the next couple of years are really going to be difficult ones, and it's, I'd like to go down that road of getting some type of professional recruiter in, just to see who would be interested, and maybe we could interview a couple of companies, or at least put the calls out, like we did before.
Okay. Councilwoman Kirwin, or Representative Howard? Laurie?
I'd prefer you.
Yeah, I'll call back to you.
Well, if you insist, I think that we're going down the right road. That sounds like the appropriate thing to do. What I remember, there were, yeah, there were four or five that we basically received, I guess you might call them informal proposals. And I remember it succinctly, because they each had different colored paper. There was a green one, there was a salmon-colored one, I think there was a yellow one, and a white one. And, you know, we, at the time, were, I think, had chosen the Mercer Group against their availability, and at the time, they appeared to be counseled, that council decided they were the best firm for us. And I think a similar process would allow us, you know, we, Phil, thank you, you've given us kind of a 30-day head start, so to say, or 29-day head start, which kind of takes a lot of pressure off us, and I certainly appreciate that. And I just want to make sure we use what time we have, largely.
We have the ability to actually post it, post the position in state and national journals. We would, in fact, be able to do that, which would be a cost savings, I'm just considering that. Not searched before, of course, this is a major responsibility of this council, is hiring and evaluating, finding the very best we can find. When faced with a situation like this before, in Troy schools, we had the opportunity of having a fabulous deputy superintendent right there, someone in-house who was trained, understood the job, and who had served before in the capacity as an interim. So no matter what we choose now, we have two fine candidates in-house who want it, and will also be called upon to serve interim. Because should you, as a body, we as a body, decide to use a firm, then we're faced with an appointed interim again. You know, I'm looking at dollars and what makes sense, and I do see two fine candidates here. Although it seems that there's consensus at the table, or there is a majority at the table who wants to use firms.
I think one thing that's important for us to get, and of course, we would get it either way, is to get a complete resume from, from both Brian Murphy and John Armorato, with all the details of their background, training, expertise, et cetera, because, you know, we go from memory here, and we would be comparing to other candidates. I expressed my personal feelings about it at the onset, but I do think that it's good that we all discuss it, and we'll come to a decision as a group. Because it is a major time commitment, not only on part of staff to do this, but on us, too. Because if you recall, when we actually did this profile with the Mercer Group, it meant extra time, we had to meet with them individually, as well as collectively. And so there's a lot of factors involved there with doing it this way.
I'd suggest, too, that we try to think a little outside the box on this one. Rather than just limiting our search to those individuals who are just strictly municipal professionals, that we look at the professional management in general, and see if there might be a candidate, you know, who's not spent his entire career, her entire career, just in municipal government, but maybe the private sector, look at the private sector as well. Suggestion. So we don't want to just focus just on individuals with municipal degrees. Two fine candidates here with that, and I'm sure there are others, but think outside the box. We're in for some tough times, and just, I think that maybe looking at alternative, different thinking, rather than just municipal government.
Councilwoman Beltran?
I don't, I don't disagree with you, Wade. My only caveat I would put on that is, I think that in looking at those business people, they need to have had some municipal experience somewhere, and I don't care if they were collegiate in term, but there are lots of things that cities can't do, that business people think we ought to be able to do, but it's just beyond the law to do. And I don't want to hire somebody and put them in the position of trying to make a decision, trying to make a change, and have all of their senior staff say, are you nuts? The first three times they try what they think is a creative solution. And I think as responsible leaders and decision-makers, we need to keep that in mind. So that's, that would be the only caveat I would put on that, is somebody who is strictly a businessperson, it may be difficult to find somebody who truly understands some of those ins and outs.
Councilwoman Kirwin?
I do feel strongly about training. I would look somewhat into that. I do value civil engineering. I did appreciate the planning background, because you can talk about the breadth of things, I think that there are a lot of people. You weren't considering a politician or anyone like that, just someone from outside. So I guess we differ in that.
As I look at the kinds of things that are required in the charter for the city manager with functions and duties, I think that we need to be very careful about choosing someone who could perform all of those within the constraints that city government has to work within. And the fact that there are sometimes situations out, as, I don't want to repeat everything that Councilwoman Beltran said, but the things that are done out in the business world that may not be applicable to what we need here for, for the city of Troy. I know that in looking at the candidates previous, we ruled some people out who were on the, like, shortlist, because they didn't meet the standard that was there. And so I think that that's really important to look at. Councilwoman Beltran?
I have one other comment, and it comes from our experience of three years ago. I, it is, everybody said it, we have two perfectly fine candidates sitting here, both of them with MPAs and all of the academic requirements and years of training. I want to ask the question straight out, so that there is no misunderstanding. Even if we choose to go outside and choose to appoint either John or Brian interim, can they both be considered for this position? In some cases, people do not want to consider an interim for the full time, and I want that clear, so that they know what And I want that clear, so that they know what that is, and the rest of us know. I don't want to come to this decision in May or June and think that my guy may or may not be eligible if that's what I decide after looking at everybody. So, right out, if you appoint him as interim, are you going to let him apply for the full-time job?
Mayor? Councilwoman Berman, Phil?
I think last time, we looked at if, if they were going to be in interim, they were not going to apply.
That's right.
That, that did take place last time. I'm not so sure that that has to be the standard, and we set the standard. The assumption here, though, is that, and again, I'm feeling a bit awkward with two good guys sitting here talking about your future. But the assumption is, too, that they'll be, either one will be appointed as interim. We haven't even got to that point yet.
I know that.
And, but I think anybody who gets appointed as interim, we should not assume that they cannot apply for the job. I felt constrained last time in how that, how that all spilled out. I don't, I don't think a person should have to pick between, am I going to accept an interim appointment? Or should I try to get this job, but bypass this opportunity to have the experience of an interim? You know, I think that's, I don't think that's necessary.
Okay, that's two of us. There are seven.
I think it's very important that the person that is chosen as, as interim be as equal in applying for the position and as anyone. I think there's things that, that need to be done in this interim time, you know, so we only have 120 days, that it be very important that we keep moving along. You know, we're coming up to budget, and it's crucial, and we've got some other crucial timelines here. And so, I think that, that'd be important. But I think it's very important to be fair to everybody concerned. I'm glad you expressed that.
A question, though, tonight, don't we, do we appoint an interim tonight? I mean, not until after.
We, we would have to do it, correct me if I'm wrong, we have to go into, we can't do it at the study session, we'd have to go?
No, you will have two opportunities. You have two meetings before the 31st. There's one on the 23rd and another one on the 30th. Of course, I'm sure that people would like to know as soon as possible, but there are two other opportunities and a regular meeting.
There has been a request, and I concur, that we would have full resumes and letters, and we haven't received those, even though we, you know.
Well, I, I think that, if I, if I could speak for you too, that they were waiting until we actually accepted Phil's resignation, which is the protocol that you do usually.
I was mentioning that, just so that we knew that we weren't doing this tonight.
We do have time, there will be other opportunities, and I believe that that's why you were bringing that up, is that we would have.
Well, I think everybody likes to get their things and take time on their own to read them and study them, you know.
I do agree with the ladies so far, though. I don't, I don't, I don't know why before an interim could not continue to apply, but I agree with the three speakers before me, that interim should not rule out someone seeking manager.
I agree, but the other side here is, it's going to be very difficult if you appoint an interim, and then the other person gets the job. And I think that's, that can happen, but you just, you just don't know. I think that both of these gentlemen have their work cut out for them, full-time, for the next four months. I guess approximately five months, if it takes us that long. We're going through a lot of change. Even if we did appoint one as an interim, did fill the position internally after going outside, I think we'd probably still have to find another assistant city manager when that process was over.
We don't find.
But that's up to the managers.
But that's the city manager to do that.
Right.
I know. But there's going to be another one there. But there, there are other alternatives. We can look for someone else as an interim, and keep these two guys doing exactly what they're doing, both qualified candidates being evaluated for the job, without doing one of them as interim.
So, are they eligible or not if they're appointed interim?
I think so.
We want to hear from David and Martin, you want to say anything regarding this?
This is a question I hadn't considered, and I would, I should have thought of it, I should have had a chance to sleep on it.
Well, they've both served as interim before, as, as acting city managers before, and so, you know, they, they both know everything.
I've not been an acting manager, I've just, I've not been an acting manager.
Well.
I've been a manager.
Manager.
Active, not acting.
And John has, sir.
I'm not passing the candidate. Any other?
I'd go back to my original statement, I want the best city manager possible for the future of the city. And so, now I couldn't say that the acting city manager would be disqualified. Although it would be very difficult to pick one that gives the other.
That would just be admitting that you didn't make the best choice from the beginning. We didn't, yeah. It's no reflection on that.
I think they've both been at this long enough that they can figure it out pretty.
But getting back to the process, I, I would feel very comfortable if we put the calls out, and then, based on the response, maybe had a time that we interviewed, one, two, three, I mean, however many timeline it would work for them, as well as what our timeline is, and do a interview of the company, and then make a decision from there. That, that's what I'm comfortable with.
We probably have to look at dates that are other than a council meeting.
Well, I know that. Cancel your trip to the Caribbean.
Hopefully, we can have some interviews by the 30th.
Firms, yes.
For the firms, not, not candidates.
Right.
Professional recruiters, to use the proper term. I'd like to see it by the 30th, if that's all possible for our agenda. Question would be, is, where would we put it in the agenda?
Would it be a study session?
That's late at night.
No, we wouldn't be able to do it at the same meeting as the council meeting, is what I just said. We'd have to set up a special meeting.
Six thirty.
No, on a different day. We'd have to have a special meeting, we need more time than that.
I don't think so, I mean, the whole intent of the third meeting was for this very reason.
Yeah, right.
We went from two meetings to three meetings.
Right.
We have three meetings in, in March.
March.
In March. And we have the 23rd, and then we have the 30th. So, that's what you want to?
Question for Peggy. Is it reasonable for you to call five firms tomorrow and say, "Can you send us a draft proposal by the 23rd?"
Sure.
So that then, by the 30th, we would be actually looking at something?
I doubt that we would actually be interviewing all these firms. These are out-of-state firms, and I don't know that they're going to send a team up here for an interview, and, you know, just, yeah.
Just like this.
That's right, we had the different colors.
Yeah.
That's why we were probably red. That's what it was. They could send us there.
So, it'd probably be April, before we can, pardon?
No, 30th of March.
They can come by then.
Or, or they just send their information, like we did before.
I don't think we've met any of them.
No, we just had that initial meeting with Mercer.
Did we?
I don't know that we met the ones with the proposals, but, and if they can't get it to us on time, I guess we could just indicate that we knocked them out.
So, does that mean that the meeting of the 30th, we need to light the agenda again? I don't know what's in there, the 23rd, we already have.
A lot.
But that's a regular meeting.
A lot. Well, the 30th is scheduled as a regular meeting. Also, I'm just saying that, you know, if we're going to do all that, certainly aren't going to, because 23rd, we've got those public hearings, and we've got the seven liquor hearings, then the regular agenda things that have to come.
And was that the Clark Hill? And then that was first. It's a long meeting.
I have a question.
I'm just giving the timeframe, okay.
In, in looking in-house, in looking at a firm, would we also accept through the human resource department applications if somebody hears about it? I mean, we talked about putting something like a posting. I mean, I think that, I don't think we should rule that out.
They had to go through the vetting process, though, when, last time when we.
Well, I know that, and I wasn't, I wasn't comfortable that, that, that once we selected a firm, it was the firm that took control. That bothered me. I think that if there's, if there's, I, I mean.
We had someone else that should be put in the agency.
That's what you're paying them for.
I understand.
And that puts everybody on the same foot.
That particular firm forgot that I was the customer. But anyway, I, I like the idea of being able to have some say-so in the list, or the candidates, or the shortlist that they bring. And in, in that case, of course, the way it worked out, the, the firm did not honor, I didn't think, my request to look at somebody. And I had to fight to get that to happen. Now, the person never made it, and that's okay. But I had the right, as a customer, to say, "I wanted to look at this person." And if I got outvoted, I got outvoted, but I wasn't. And so, I, you know, maybe that would be in part of the interview of these firms, that if there is somebody that wants to submit an application, they should have the right to do that, if we want to look at that person.
I don't know if I agree, though, Kristina.
I don't, I don't agree with that.
We disagree on a lot of things, but I, I want to, I, I, if, if something comes across the table that I'm interested in, I want to have that right to look at it. I don't want someone. Well, that person would then submit it to the, to the firm that you hired. I certainly think that the person should be able to submit it to the firm, but not that we, as individuals, get to say that.
Does that mean that our in-house folks go through the firm?
Yeah, everybody goes through the firm.
I, I think that's.
They might not make the shortlist.
Right.
Well, I think, I think the process is part of.
What if I want them to make the shortlist, and the firm won't do it? See, this, that's what I'm saying, that's where there was a tug-of-war with our last member. There was a tug-of-war, because they, they were not.
You'd think they were giving the candidate due diligence.
That's where I thought we'd have an interview, and then, I mean, because my blunt question is, is how responsive are you going to be to our, to your customer? The seven of us. I mean, this is a political decision, we're going to be melding seven ideas into finding a person that will hopefully have the consensus of all of us in support.
I wouldn't be comfortable if our two assistant managers decided to go through the process, and they didn't make the shortlist. I would say to that firm, "I want them on the shortlist. I want, I want to do the, the, the interview." And if they said, "Well, you can't, because this is the criteria, and this is our list, and we're not going to do that."
That's, well, I, I mean, I remember that, and I don't think that that's what they said. They said their guarantee wasn't good on that person.
Right.
We could interview.
But that was only after I kicked in the open.
But their guarantee wasn't good on that person, because they would not have made their.
And, and I was okay with that, Robin, but they didn't come to that point until I got angry, and I didn't want to have to go there.
But I think that's an equitable compromise.
I think so, too.
You know, or I.
I think so, too, that they.
If you feel strongly about presenting some candidate to the group, then that candidate has to go through the firm.
Right, okay.
But if the firm says, "You know what? You're the customer. We don't agree that this person measures up, so our bets in this are off. And we've done the minimal vetting that we're going to do on somebody with this criteria, but we'll put his or her resume in there, and you guys decide." I mean, I think that's a compromise that we could pivot.
Well, they have to meet the standard that we set for education, professional development, education, skills, et cetera. And, and if, if the firm says that they don't need that criteria, they put that in the report to us, because that's, if you're going to go with a firm.
But I think all, all applications and resumes need to go through the firm, if that's, if we're hiring a professional, let them vet everybody under the same criteria.
I think it's also good to have an outside hard, hardening handling it. It just, it, it removes the stickiness, if you will. Makes your job a little bit easier, Peggy, too, you know. And like you said, we're paying for it, so we might as well get those services. And as far as how they handle that, that's part of the negotiated contract. I mean, if, if there's something that you felt uncomfortable with, the way it was handled the last time, make sure, make sure that, you know, that that's addressed before we go into a contract, is what we're being into a contract with. I think, I think this, I think this'll work.
Again, the firm will ask all of us if we agree with that. I mean, you may present that position and get a couple of people to agree with you, but maybe not the majority. I just wanted to throw it out there to you, my comments at the beginning about not spending the money, because I know we worked long and hard to find ways to save the money. And that I felt very strongly, as we look at the resumes and the information provided us by Brian Murphy and John Amorato, that they will meet, they meet the standard that was set up, and the standard is, is very high. And so, I just want to throw that out there as an option. So, we all set? We've decided as a group, we do need, we won't have a resolution?
Give direction.
Give direction, but, and we'll see what companies can meet the standard of our timeline, too. That was an important factor, I think, and maybe the deciding factor last time when we decided.
How do you advertise RFP? Would we put it on the website and just call firms?
Well, it's my understanding we're working to do an RFP, that it's just going to call and ask for a written proposal.
We should still advertise it on the website, though, right? That we're interested?
I don't, I don't think that's necessary, no.
But they do that.
There are only three or four firms even that advertise in the municipal review, for example. Two of them we've used, we've used the Power Group, we've used Mercer Group.
I'm concerned if we all get a firm that only does city managers, that their scope of candidates is only existing city managers, because I am very interested in getting the outside experience.
Also, do you, do you have a division that specializes in this?
They're usually very broad-based.
Okay, because I don't want that to be a criteria, that they have to be a city manager recruiting from.
No.
Experience in high-level recruiting, right.
They may have an opinion on that balance, but usually they're, they're broad-based, broader-based, and that they're, they're called executive search firms.
Okay, that's what I was expecting.
Do you have anything else we want to do on this item?
Yeah, when do we? Who wants to go first? Talk about the, the interim and make a decision on that, or put the recommendation on that.
Well, we can have a discussion on that, because it was included, that's the reason why it was included in the study session, so we can go to that.
How do we have a discussion without making a recommend, or like? I still would like to see a resume. I don't, I'm not prepared to have that discussion until the 23rd, I would say, or a special, special meeting to appoint.
I think any time between now and the end of the month, I mean, if somebody wants to put forward a resolution now, that works. If you want to wait, that works, too.
Now, without having the, the resume information on the person that is suggested, is that fair to the, that person or the others involved? fair to the, that person or the others involved? It's like appointing someone to boards and committees. We always get the resume, the, the form filled out, you know, and everything. We even get it the week before, two weeks before, so we can look at it. And this is even more important than doing people for boards and committees.
I don't think it's necessary. I mean, if, I understand Mary wants it, but I don't think it's necessary that, especially if we appoint somebody in-house for an interim, that we ask for a resume. I, I just, to me, then it, it's almost creating another contest, so to speak. And I don't want to do that with, with what we've got now, because the city's gone through a lot, and I just, you know, we want, the next few months, whoever is our interim manager, is going to be a bridge person, somebody that really just fills the gap in until we get that final person. And I don't want to accept resumes and make it like a contest. We just need to think about it. If someone wants to bring forward a name and gives us, gives reasons why they feel that way, you know, then we, we would go from there. But a resume, I mean, I didn't know these two guys.
I don't. I absolutely, I don't know the, I actually don't know the education on either one.
I know. Then they can send you the resume. I, I don't care for it. I mean, I'm fine with it.
They, they, well, the only problem is if they send it, they have to send it to all of us. They can't send it just to.
I just want a contest. I, I don't want, I don't agree with that.
It would be the same if we were choosing for anything, for any kind of position, that we would have background information, how long served, where, what, training, all of that matters. Of course it matters.
I just don't think that the resume is as important if the person has or is working for the city. The person is, no, you know, if we don't know who this person is, then it certainly is, is a prerequisite, I would say.
Well, I have a suggestion.
Yes?
I suggest that we have Charlie Kraft as our interim city manager, not either one of these guys, because they're going to be equally aggressively going after the job. We've got a person who's retired. We all, we know that everyone in the city respects him. He's not a professional city manager. Don't think he's going after the job as the city manager. But it would be an interim position, till we could fill it, and then evaluate these two guys without having one of them interim or acting city manager. Because there's still a lot of work to be done here. They've got their work cut out. This city needs, I think, someone that we all know, trust, not a professional city manager, but yet can continue with the, the team building and building bridges, till we can get the person we want to choose, who decides as full-time city manager. That's what I'm thinking. I've given this some thought. I'll tell you this, Charlie Kraft is not out campaigning for the job. I can assure you of that. But I did ask him if he would consider it. And he said, "I will do anything to help this city. I love this city. I'll do anything to help this city. Doesn't matter. If that's what the council would like me to do, I will do it." But that's, I think that would be a good step while we seek full-time city manager. That's my, that's my thought. And that's thinking outside the box a little bit.
Okay.
But I do that.
Yeah, I know you do. The only thing is that there are certain areas, and I talked to Charlie about this, too, because I'd already heard that rumor, that some council member, I'd already talked to people about it, they wanted the position, so I just called them up and asked them. And there are certain areas that Charlie admits that he does not know about, that both Brian and John do know about.
Sure.
That, because he hasn't had to deal with those areas. And so he, he does know that.
The beauty of it is, John and Brian are still here. They do know those there, and they are still there, and they're both very capable, will continue to do their job.
It just seems strange to me to have the interim city manager be somebody that is actually going to get direction from the other people that are under him at the position, so that's, I think that's an uncomfortable situation for Charlie.
Hey, Mayor?
Yes?
I don't think we've ever expected any member of staff to know it all.
No.
I mean, you always rely on the people that work for you, for any job, until you get down to the very, the bottom, the lowest level of work.
Robin?
Wade?
Yes?
Ask Charlie to send us a resume. John and Brian are going to have to send resumes. Ask Charlie to send us a resume. And I know Christina doesn't necessarily need or want that, but I think that makes it fair for everybody. I mean, we know John and Brian, what they're used to dealing with on a daily basis. We know they've got MPA's. We know some other stuff about them. Have Charlie send us a resume. Put him in the second pile.
Well, actually, it would be Peggy that would, isn't it? Who requests the, I don't know.
They're going to be distributed.
It doesn't matter. They can send them to us. We just can't send them to each other.
Yeah, no, they need to be, I think they need to be sent to Human Resources.
May I use some of this stuff? It'll be fine.
And maybe send them to Phil.
Yeah, I think that would be more appropriate.
Pardon?
I think, I think it should go to Mr. Nelson, because, you know, from a, from a chain of man thing, if this per, you know, I just don't like the idea of sending a resume to somebody who's going to be reporting to you. And the city agenda is, is essentially the domain of the city manager and the city attorney. Otherwise, you could send it to Lori's office. That works, too.
Okay, so we'll get those three in, and then we'll, you want to decide on the 23rd?
Sure.
Is anybody else, thinks anybody else have?
That's someone else.
I will send a resume.
You don't want to have that discussion, now?
I'm a counselor. I just have a group discussion.
I'll tell you, I, I'd be willing to act on it this evening. I mean, I think at the last regular council meeting, we had a resolution to do that. And I think it's important to have clarity as soon as possible. And I would certainly be willing to move forward this evening. John has served us in the past as interim city manager. We've worked with Brian. I think you've been here, what, three years?
Maybe very, wait for the resume then.
To make it, to make it fair, I almost flipped out when I realized I've almost been on council for ten, so. Obviously, my, obviously, my concept of time is deteriorating as I, you know, approach forty here. But at any rate, my point is, is that we know you two, we know Charlie Kraft, and I, and I would be willing to move forward on it so that we can focus on the city manager search.
But how would you do that, if we're in closed session?
This is.
I mean, study session.
The other thing is, we have at least one council member that's uncomfortable. So I, I think that procedurally, it would be helpful if we all had appropriate information.
And truthfully, we have a city manager in place until the 31st. We accepted that. We asked for it. So we have a city manager in place. This rush to appoint someone without looking at a resume or seeing the letter or anything else, just because, gee, we know them, I, I, I don't think serves us well at all. I don't think that gives good direction. I don't think that's thoughtful.
I don't know if that's my word or what, but just pointed out to me that our video isn't working. This is a.
Well, they were having technical difficulties in, at the council meeting previously, and then they, that's when we had to wait to start, you know? So I don't know what it has to do with the, the equipment, so. I don't know. Pardon? We're still in a, we're still in an open meeting, even if it's not on the video, because for years, we didn't have a video, but anybody could come in.
All newspapers that have been relying on video instead of coming to our meetings are losing out.
God punishes.
Don't rely on video or technology for coming to meetings.
Was it working in the big room? I mean, was that?
Yeah, that's why we had to wait. That's why we didn't start. You thought we were waiting for you.
No, I knew, I, I knew that wasn't the case. You're very prompt, and I was about two minutes late today.
Everybody got real hushed in there. We were all, we were all looking at the clock, like, how come she's not starting?
It's working. It's live.
Is it working?
It's live.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry about that.
Anyway.
So we want to act on this tonight, or, if we're going to act on this tonight, we have to?
Well, we did have a request for somebody who hasn't been through this. Some of us have been through this procedure many times, and so, you know, we know. And it's not fair to, to ask someone who's requested getting information, and then I get it. It's like Christina wanted to be, have her comments to the firm about things, and we're going to let her have her comments.
But I, what I want to do is, I don't.
Wait on the 23rd.
I don't want to see the interim turning to a tug-of-war.
I don't either.
And, and that's where, you know, you start getting, okay, you want the resume, I understand. For me, I, I just don't want to see, I, I don't want to see it be erased.
I think it'll, I think it'll all work out, frankly. I have great confidence that it's all going to work out, that if we do it on the 23rd, we'll have a chance to think on it, you know?
So, just out of curiosity, if, if the last council meeting had turned out differently, does that mean we wouldn't have had a city manager?
I don't, I don't, is that part of our discussion now?
Well, I, I'm just curious as to the, the, if, you know, the, the reason for waiting, that's all.
Well, actually, at the last council meeting, it was a request from the table that the city manager extend to March 31st. So that happened. So that's where we are. So we would be currently with a city manager, as we are now.
Graciously complied with our request.
Respectfully offered.
Okay, 23rd.
Okay, so let's, let's do it on the 23rd, and now we can go to the.
Close session.
Close session, I think.
Part one.
We need to have a public comment.
Oh, I'm sorry, public comment, anybody?
Yes.
Yes, Mary Ann?
Well, first, I'd just like to comment that the tape did go off at home, and that's when we're, it just suddenly cut off. And I don't know what part of the meeting did get televised, but I think if we need new equipment, it seems like we're having trouble with those, to the broadcast, and I think it's a really important part of our city government, because that's the window through which residents can view the operations of our local city government. And we need equipment, and we can spend seventy-six hundred dollars a month on a wireless, but we can just spend money to get proper equipment, so that residents in this city can know what's happening, and that's the municipal level of our government. And I also commend you for deciding to go with a professional firm, because I think, again, as far as priorities go, what could be more important than our city manager position? And we can't spend money there, from, you know, the question of priority. And thirdly, I would like to commend Mr. Nelson. I read in the paper, one of the comments said that what they, what the new city that was hiring him, one of the things they appreciated in him was his quiet Midwestern demeanor. And when I read that, it hit a chord with me, because I thought, you know, that's what I really liked all the time about him, was his demeanor. It was so calming and reassuring, and in this hectic life that we live, it was so nice to meet a person who could project those feelings and kind of make you feel a little bit more secure, and I really appreciated that. And I also appreciated that, as being on, on my homeowner's board, we had some problems that we needed some help with in terms of permits for the kids' parades and things like that. And I came to Mr. Nelson. He had an open door policy. It was very welcoming and very, very, very helpful. And the kids ended up having a terrific time. It became something that we're going to have all the time. And I think largely, largely, because of his help, I think without that, it wouldn't have gotten, been so successful and gotten on the floor the way it did. And so the kids in our neighborhood are going to always have fun on Halloween, and a large part to Mr. Nelson. So you may be leaving, but you won't be leaving in, in some ways, too. So we really do appreciate that. And I, I don't understand what happened. I don't think any of the residents in this city know what happened. It's a mystery to me. Not much came through in the papers in terms of what, or why, or wherefore. All I can say is, you know, in my state of confusion, I'm sorry to see, I'm sorry to see Mr. Nelson that you're leaving. But I hope you're happy, you know, in the, in the new place that you go, and you're very welcome, because I think you deserve it. And again, I, I do hope that you'll search for, you know, as far as hiring from within, you know, there have been some policies that have come down the pike that I think, that I, I find very troubling. And, you know, I have opinions about those things. I mean, as, as many of you have said, if you're hiring within, we know the people, we know the policies they stood by. And I would like to know how, if you have the input of people who have lived under these policies, or seen them come and go, and have opinions about them, do you care about the opinion of the residents on those issues? I, I think hiring from within is, we're pretty, I think Martin Councilman Howard, like I said, it's a sticky issue. I think it's pretty sticky. I mean, I have very positive feelings on some things and very not-so-positive feelings on some other things. So, you know, it's hard to even decide where you're at sometimes, when there's, you see the whole picture. Sometimes when you see everything, it makes it even more, a little more confusing. And I, I think you should, if you're hiring within, I think you need to look at the residents a little bit more, and what have they experienced with these people. Even tonight, I have some observations. So, I mean, and I think they're very valid observations. And, but I, I don't feel comfortable, I don't know if these cameras are working or not. They worked before, and who knows if they are now, so. But I don't feel comfortable sharing those kinds of, any kind of observation like that that would impact the hiring, not hiring the person in public. But, but I would urge you to listen or find some forum for residents who, who, you know, would have, would want to provide some input. I mean, you're hiring someone to represent us. It's not a lunked office, and yet it's, it's a position that affects all of us significantly down through the years. And I just gave you some examples of how maybe you might view, you know, an Easter hunt or a Halloween parade as a small thing. I don't, because it's really creates a sense of community in, in my neighborhoods. So those kinds of things that will impact us down through the years, and I, I would hope you would try to find a way that if you're hiring within, that you get some input from residents down the line. If you're hiring from without, we, I, I would say you should go along, go with your decision to, sorry, but, that you should go with your decision to hire a professional team, and I commend you for doing that. I think that was a very wise decision. Thank you.
Anyone else? Yeah, Sajid?
One thing I would like to see is that.
One thing I would like to see is that any new manager or any, not hire family or relatives within the city, because since I've lived here, all I can think of is the program, all of the family. And the more I hear this one's got this relative here and this one's got that relative there, and I'm thinking, it's almost like everybody's related to everybody some way, except for a few that I know that are not. And I just think that it should be in there that no relatives should, this is part of the job thing, that no relatives can be related. And if you're married, then one has to leave the city, not, not work in the city. I think it's time that that, but they do that in a lot of corporations, that if you're, if you're getting married to somebody within the business, you, one of you has to leave.
Question.
Yes.
Audrey, are you talking about any employees or the city manager?
Well, the city manager hires.
Yeah.
And I think that he should-
We should have no married or siblings or children or-
That's the end of the police department, I think.
Well, if, that's what happens. And then they're all in there and I know what unions are like, too. And you get them all in there and they all sit together and you, you're like a losing battles.
Except that they're, they had to pass the examination and the testing and everything and it was strictly on the merits of their qualifications. It had nothing to do with the fact that they're related to anyone. And I know that, that's always been the policy here in the city of Troy, that for any position, they must meet the merits and the standards. I don't know that we could restrict, but it certainly isn't like some cities that I know of that are a little ways from here where they have some policies that are not, but Troy has never been, been like that. We've always been very, very fair about making sure that they meet, and lots of times, they exceed the qualifications they expected for the position. All right, we're going to do our close session now? Okay?
Thanks, folks.
Thank you.